And broadcasts, we are just waiting for attendees to populate the room.
No, Saturday.
All set. Thanks, Chair.
Great, thanks. Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting for March 2nd, 2022. I'm going to begin by calling the role. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delisle.
Here.
Bob Coop.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Yeah.
Don Walters.
Here.
Is Bonnie here yet? Bonnie Sontag? Not yet.
At present.
And Rick Tainer here. So we have six members attended at this point. So on our agenda tonight, we have three public hearings. We have the first continued public hearing for Turnpike Redevelopment LLC at 166 to 168 Route 1 for Smart Growth Plan Approval. The second public hearing is for Caswell Restaurant Group at 17 to 24 State Street for a DOD special permit. The third public hearing is the Institution for Savings at 79 State Street for another DOD special permit. Under other business, we have continued discussion on the proposed short-term rental unit ordinance. If we have time for that, then we have approval of minutes and any other updates from the Chair or Planning Director. So with that, let us reopen the public hearing for Turnpike Redevelopment 166 to 168 Route 1. And who would like to speak for the applicant? I see Lumen Kuchi with his hand raised. And Joe Circaovich.
Yeah. I'm not sure, Rick, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so as it just as a continuation, I'm gonna have Joe Circaovich, our architect, open it up a little bit and then I think we're gonna primarily try to focus on the redesign of the landscaping area at the knot section of our building. So, Joe, I guess I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Lou. Hi, this is Joe Circaovich from Arrow Street Architects. And Mr. Tainer, if you have the current plan, if you could bring that up to the screen, is that possible?
Yeah, Andy has it.
Okay.
Yeah, Joe, if I just tell us which sheets you'd like, I know your, most of these sheets haven't changed, so you may.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could just quickly move on to sheet 18 is the one we want to talk about.
Yeah, and Joe, if you want me to talk, just pass the baton to me.
Yeah, so we got a lot of good feedback at the last public hearing and most of the suggestions and comments were about improvements to the retail building and the connection to the rail trail adjacent to it and creating more of an open feeling and more of a welcome access to that space. And I think Bob Ulich from Halverson Time Bond Studio can take it from here and talk about some of the improvements that have been made based upon some of the suggestions we heard at that meeting.
Bob, if you don't mind me interjecting, this is Andy, just wanted to note that Bonnie Sontag has joined the board.
Thank you. Okay. Andy, do you prefer to not do full screen and keep the thumbnails on the left?
Generally speaking, yeah, so we start if I can blow up any area you like, so.
Okay, that's fine. If you could, if you could enlarge it, so we basically have almost where the beer garden is at Riverwalk on the left and that little plaza area on the right, you can probably go a little further on the yeah, a little more to the right there. I want to kind of get the whole building in there. But go from right where the beer garden, from F, right where the F is there, over to the plaza area at Hill Street. So just back off a little bit. If you back off just a little more. Right, that's, yeah, that's perfect. So just a little review of the summary of the process to date. As Joe indicated and as Lou indicated, our dialogue with the planning board, I apologize to, so Robert Ulich, 174 Merrimack Street, Halverson Time Bond Studio for the record. Our dialogue and collaboration with the planning office and the planning board has progressed over the past few months and as we've had dialogue with you, we've been encouraged as time has gone along to reduce rather than reinforce the separation between the Clipper City Rail Trail and the sites and particularly in the areas where we may have public invitation and public access to the site that we're trying to achieve. These comments have been mostly focused on this, both the north end of the site where we have the commercial retail building and then the south end of the site where we have a connection over to the Hill Street crossing and such. And, and so in response to that, particularly, particularly at the north end where the, kind of where the, in the area where the F is between that and the northwest corner of the building, we pulled back what I'll call the landscape curtain. We essentially had a whole array of, you know, trees and so forth between that northwest corner and the parking lot area. And, and per the feedback that you've given us, we've opened that up so that essentially what you're seeing in dark green is more of a a ground plane planting of seasonal shrubs and perennials, but the trees are kind of off to the left and to the right. So the trees off to the left are screening views from the Clipper City Rail Trail to the parking lot. Trees to the right are more or less providing a kind of a little bit of a screen between kind of what we consider the semi-private areas of the residential areas of the building and the rail trail. So again, opened in the middle. And in addition to that, we've kind of been encouraged to extend the reach of the plaza, not to limit it to the, to just the the property line, but think about, you know, extending it. So we think of that whole space as one space. Think about the grading as one continuous grading. So before we had kind of a swale right along that property line, we raised that up, graded all out so that it's level. So really, there's kind of much less of a distinguished difference between if you're on the rail trail and that open space. And to further reinforce the public invitation into the plaza area, we've expanded the plaza area out and we've introduced kind of these two bifurcating pathways such that if you're coming from the train to the south along the rail trail and you approach it, there's a pathway that kind of reaches out to you at the south end and invite you into the plaza area likewise down by where the F is. If you're coming from downtown along the rail trail, there's another path that kind of leads you into the plaza that, from that direction. So before we just had one path, it was 90 degrees to the rail trail. Now we've tried to create these real public invitations that draw you into the site as well as keeping a little seating area that's out adjacent to the rail trail that can be used by the public as well. So again, there's this idea of and trying to make it transparent and open and inviting. In addition to that, there was some discussion about the uses in the, in the commercial retail area around the building. And so, you know, trying to not have grills and so forth there, we've moved the grills around to the area between, to the west of the building essentially and, and created a continuous paved area between kind of the main entrance and there's a little zen garden area that we talked about that's kind of in light gray between there and the plaza that will be used as kind of more of a semi-private area for residents, right? And then right at the northwest corner of the building, we've introduced the fence to make it clear where, you know, given that this plaza area is really open and inviting the public, we wanted to make it clear where it's become semi-private. So there's a fence there, but everything open and adjacent to where the commercial retail building is and is all open to the public as well as the residents. So and then there's the opportunity around the, around the site for a variety of different uses. We've put in lounge chairs, picnic tables, kind of bar seating, high tops around closer to the building and then cafe tables and chairs. So we're anticipating a variety of uses that will be, that we really hope will be a terrific civic amenity. So wanted to highlight that for you. That's, I think that's the biggest change that we had. And then to kind of further reflect that, we wanted to kind of go through the slides, the three dimensional slides that show you the character of the space. So if you could go Andy to slide 39. So we're gonna show you a series of slides, some of which you've seen already. So this again is kind of the experience. If you're standing at the rail trail at the south connection, it would lead both to the main entrance to the building and then beyond to the Hill Street connection. This is the open visibility that you get. Again, you know, more ground plane planting, but trees either side to eat that open and inviting and then seating right here at the, at the, at the gateway from the rail trail. And again, we've kept the paving, the new paving so that it doesn't interrupt the rail trail. So that's that image. Next image, you can just go to the next one, slide 40. This is again, the experience, if you do go on that Hill Street connector through the site, we've separated pedestrians from vehicles at the turnaround drop off area and you head off towards towards Hill Street. And there's also a kind of an open courtyard here you see in the foreground that's open to the public as well as residents. Next image, please. And this is a view as if you were over at the corner of Hill Street, looking back at the site. You know, the site is full of public amenities that are not just residential or open to the residents. This is kind of the gateway, south courtyard as on the left-hand side where the couple is with the stroller, that would be the pathway that goes from Hill Street over to the rail trail and then to the right-hand side is the sidewalk essentially. As you can see buffered from Route 1 traffic leading to the front of the building and over to the north end of the site. And then if you go to skip one image and go to the next one beyond that, this is the new image kind of showing you that experience from the rail trail to the north with the little plaza area for seating and then kind of again, open visibility as we've been encouraged to do, which I think really provides a nice integrated and open connection between the plaza area and you can see the commercial retail building really highly visible and yet screening the parking lot area. And then you can see the plaza with tables and chairs and so forth in the foreground. So I think that unless you want to highlight anything else, Joe, that I think highlights the improvements that we've made since the last time we met with you all based upon the encouragement that you gave us.
I think that's it for now, Mr. Tainer.
Thank you. But before I open this up to the public comment, are there any questions from members of the planning board about what has been presented tonight? Not necessarily debating the, the topic yet, but any questions about what you've just seen? If not, then I guess we can open it up to public hearing if anybody in the public, Andy is.
One question.
Yes.
I just wanted, could they be more, a little more specific about what the nature of the fence is that's adjacent to the plaza shielding the, the little more private area?
Sure. It's who would probably, I mean, designed it yet, but it would probably be a picket fence or something in that, you know, it's just a three-foot-high fence, not a seven or eight-foot-high fence, just a fence to denote, you know, this is semi-private versus this is where the public is welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Andy, is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard?
Quick question.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. I wonder if, if you could just clarify where the live work units are one more time. Is that, is that the same as your last presentation?
Yes, this is Joe Circaovich. The live work units are in the same location. So in this diagram, you can see we have the gym in the corner and the three orange spaces adjacent to the gym are the live work units. And additionally, there are two more live work units in the southern part of the building noted there as live work. For a total of five.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, this is Andy Port. I would just note for the record that the Parks Commission did meet and look at the proposed improvements on the rail trail section and had approved those. So that was good to be able to close that loop prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Were there any members of the public who wanted to be heard?
Joe Morgan?
Yes, Director Port, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, this is Joe Morgan, 55 Hill Street. I'm in the Back Bay neighborhood and I'd like to address the chair and the members of the board with a proposal. I'd like to suggest that there's a construction mitigation plan that is part of the construction package and to protect the Butters and the Back Bay community. I'm thinking that it might have three parts to it. First of all, working hours, reasonable start and finish times should be specified for weekdays and maybe Saturdays if that's appropriate. Number two, I would suggest a construction vehicle control and site access, site access plan. We can see very clearly from all these conversations that it's a tight site and there's going to be limited access for construction as well as even once it's occupied. In this way, we would guarantee we would implement, implement safe gate access possibly monitored by site personnel, flagmen, if you will. And then finally, number three would just be in general noise and nuisance control. I might suggest, and I've seen this before, is that cities could have a hotline for the community so that any kind of nuisance issues can be reported and followed up on. These, those issues might be noise, vibration, dust, nighttime light levels. For some reason, contractors like to leave on their lights at night. Safety is of course is extremely important because of all the pedestrian activity. And I would suggest that whoever staffs that hotline would be authorized to engage the construction manager for resolution. And then there's another item that's not mitigation, but this deals with post occupancy HVAC noise levels. I'd like to have those measured maybe in the commissioning phase of the project, it might be included as a deliverable. And of course, all of these mitigation issues that I just suggested a while ago could be included as part of the general or special conditions of the contract as Director Port has been detailing over the last couple of sessions. So that concludes my comments. I thank the, the board for your consideration. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Just, just for the record, I do want to note that the hours of operation are already in the proposed conditions. They are, I believe, standard condition number 19, which limits construction to 7:00 AM to 5:00 on weekdays and 8:00 AM to 4:00 on Saturdays. So that's, that's just a standard condition that the city has. Andy, do you have any, any comments on how you deal with construction management typically for this kind of project?
Yeah, so we were, we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting with the developer prior to the start of their work. Again, it's understandable that they're not gonna be able to impact the Mast OT right away or the city right of way on Parker Street. So obviously they'll have to keep their construction activities largely contained on the site. There will be a temporary disturbance of a portion of the rail trail, but as you can see, most of that is, is just offset of the rail trail path itself. So that'll be coordinated with the Parks Commission or the Parks Director, Lee Reed, on that end. But the Department of Public Services will participate in that pre-construction meeting. Typically Mast OT would handle its own end with the developer. We wouldn't typically be involved in their meeting.
Great, thank you.
And Chair Tantor, would the public be invited to review any documents that come out of those meetings?
That would be, that's a post-approval condition. So that would be something that you would have to discuss with Director Port.
Yeah, Joe, if you'd like to follow up with me after the meeting, we can, we can follow up on any details related to that and any documents that come out of that, certainly we're happy to share.
Very good. Thank you, Andy.
I assume there's nobody else in the public, Andy, that you see?
That's correct, Chair. Joe was the only member who had raised, actually, no, uh, oddly, we have sort of a two Joe Morgans in our audience raising their hands. Joe, do you have perhaps two devices running or?
Yes, we do. If I could invite Katharina Slaughterback to speak.
Sure. Could you just give your name and name and address for the record? Thank you.
Sure, I'm Katharina Slaughterback, also at 55 Hill Street. And I'd like to address just one of the many pedestrian safety issues created by transition, transitioning this area by the train station into a densely populated residential area, hundreds of new residents. I would like to first of all, thank the board for all of their hard work on this development. But with respect, I would like to say that I was dismayed by the amount of time the board spent on discussing cars and parking. I don't believe this is in the spirit of the Smart Growth District, which was designated by both the city and the state as a transit smart growth district to encourage the use of public transportation and to reduce car dependency. And this evening, I'd like to encourage the board to think about the area between the Hill Street Route 1 intersection and the pedestrian crossing at Parker Street and the Clipper City Rail Trail as the pedestrian corridor that it already is. That is to privilege the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists over car traffic. In discussing the Hill Street Route 1 intersection, the board focused on two groups of pedestrians, the residents of the new development and users of the Clipper City Rail Trail. And consequently, proposals were made to create pedestrian access through the new development onto the rail trail, which we saw tonight. And I'm not opposed to these proposals. However, they ignore a third and larger group of pedestrians, people going to and from the train station from points, north and east, that is from Hill Street, Cherry Street and State Street. People walking to a train station will always take the most direct path. And the most direct path to the train station from the Hill Street intersection is not through the new development. Currently commuter pedestrians cross Hill Street at Route 1 and then they are immediately abandoned by the city. Consequently, they walk through the Ashby Cross parking lot and pedestrians do not belong in parking lots. Then at the entrance to the Ashby Cross parking lot, the commuter pedestrians jaywalk across Parker Street where they've beaten down a separate dirt path to the station platform. And I have witnessed many near collisions between cars and pedestrians at this junction. Now, whether pedestrians should or should not walk this way to the train station is irrelevant because they will always seek the most direct route to the train station. So let's make it safe for them. Let's think about putting a sidewalk on Lower Hill Street to discourage walking through the parking lot. And then at the intersection of Hill and Parker Street, instead of privileging cars once again and giving them running access to Parker Street, let's honor this area as the pedestrian corridor that it is and will be. Now, your traffic engineer said that no car would stop at a stop sign here. Well, I respectfully disagree with this assessment. Make the cars stop. Consider making the Hill-Parker Street intersection a hard T intersection with a stop sign. And then to discourage the current jaywalking, add a pedestrian crosswalk at the new intersection. This would have the additional benefit of discouraging trucks from using Lower Hill Street as an off-ramp from Route 1 to Parker Street. And signage on Lower Hill Street could be added to alert vehicles that they are entering the pedestrian corridor and a seal to all automobile traffic. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I am a neighbor who walks and bikes this area all the time. It is not safe and it will be even less safe with the addition of many more pedestrians and cars from the new development. In closing my remarks, I would like to urge that a professional pedestrian safety consultant be hired to look at the many more pedestrian problems in the new Transit Smart Growth District. So I thank you very much, Madam Chairman and members of the board, for listening to my comments this evening.
Thank you very much.
I've seen no other hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll bring it back to the planning board and ask if you have any discussion about the proposal or have any ideas of how to move forward with this. Any members of the planning board wish to speak?
Yep, Rick, this is Don. I assume we're going to go over some of the special conditions or standard conditions to the extent we have something. So you're just trying to see if there's any other comments on what we heard today presented.
Yes, that's, that's right.
All right, all right, thanks. No, I don't have, thank you.
I would just say in, in response to the, the previous speaker that, you know, we did look at pedestrian circulation in this area. I understand the concerns about pedestrian safety. We did discuss a potential sidewalk along Hill Street. I think that was something we felt was not necessarily a requirement of, is not a situation that arose from this development. So it's a recognized issue. It's a city issue, but it's not an issue that the, this development caused. And so we did not feel that it was something that we, an expense that we could lay on, on this development as part of that. But the issue is, is recognizing and I think your idea of a pedestrian circulation plan for the area is a good one going forward. So thank you for that. If there's, if there's, yes, go ahead, somebody?
Yeah, it's Alden. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I do like the, the new connection at the north end of the building with the two angled paths and the open area there. I think that is an improvement and much more inviting. And as people will take the shorter route when they're, than when they're walking, having those two angled walkways make a lot of sense to me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, if there are no, no other comments on the plan at this point, I suggest that we go, begin going through the draft decision and just go through it, I guess, page by page and ask whether any members have any comments on any of the things in, in the draft.
Rick, could I just interrupt? I'm sorry. This is Beth.
Hi, Beth.
Hi, I was just curious about the pavers that are gonna be used in these, in the plaza area. And if the developer could just clarify what is going to be impervious versus where there are gonna be permeable pavers.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm trying, pardon my, I don't even think about that. Let's see.
I can go over that, Bob. This is Scott Cameron.
Thank you, Scott, because I know we've discussed it, but I forgot the exact.
More. Good evening. This is Scott Cameron with Moore and Cameron Group, 66 Allen Street in Danvers, Massachusetts. So with respect to the pavers, if you're looking at this image, you'll see two color distinctions. You see a brown like or a darker tan and then you see a beige, almost the color of the building. So the, the lighter beige cover color would be concrete. Those are mainly in the linear sidewalk connections to make a smooth, you know, uniform surface for people to, to use. And then the darker brown colors, those will be your pervious pavers with exception, because always there's always exceptions. The portion where the cursor is right now in front of the main doorway. So kind of the plaza, I'll call the entry plaza where we'll have more loading and foot in with, you know, the the moving van spaces there for furniture, things like that, that will be set on a concrete. So it's a more durable, longer lasting surface. And then in the center of the island in the pedestrian crosswalk in the driveway right there, those will also be set in concrete because again, they could be subject to vehicular loads. And again, the more the going over the pavement. And then the only other area that would, we're gonna do them in the same paving material, but would not be pervious would be in the area to the left. So this would be in kind of the, the, kind of the private open space area right there. So those sit over, that's kind of a green roof. It actually, it is a green roof. It is over the, the garage below grade. So obviously in that area, we couldn't drain through that anyway. So that will also be impervious. So it'll be set on a concrete base instead of a sand and joint construction.
So, so the area around the retail building will all be pervious?
Correct. Yep. Correct. Yep.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Beth?
Yes, it answers the question. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anything else before we dig into this document? If not, then Andy, could you pull up the draft decision on the screen for us? Great, thank you. So the first thing is the, actually, before that, there's the list of plans and documents. And I guess my suggestion would be to add to that list the the two kind of external traffic plans that are referred to in the, in the decision, the plans showing the area around the intersection of Route One and Hill Street, and the plan showing the intersection of Hill and Parker just for completeness, just so we have that listed as one of the documents that we've looked at.
Agreed, Sharon. As noted, Caitlin will add the plan references tomorrow morning, and we'll make sure that that is included in there. As you point out, that's important or integral to the special condition or conditions.
So under
Can I just interrupt again? Sorry. I just wanted to point out, when I was looking at the plans, some of them don't seem to reflect the latest landscaping. Like, I think I was looking at maybe one of the last ones, like one of the perspective views. I think it was A five. I wrote it down somewhere. A five oh six, for example, I think doesn't seem to reflect the newest landscaping. So I just wanted to make sure that those get updated to be clear that it's not like that is not that's showing the half round still.
Oh, up at the far end.
Yeah.
Yeah, Beth, I think that's a good point. The, obviously, the drawing sheets, plan view will control here, but I think it's a good point to raise that these renderings don't adequately show the changes that were made most recently on the parks side.
So is that, so is that actually, does that have the same date in this list? It has the same revision date as all the others?
Yeah, and so I just keep in mind that those plan dates had not yet been updated by Caitlin. So the expectation was we would finalize those if the board is referencing this plan set. Before the decision is filed, we were focused on the special conditions in this draft. So you're correct, those plan references will be updated. But I guess to Beth's point, which is a good one, well, the illustration doesn't match here. It's the site plan and the illustration that matches that that would control here.
So I think, I guess my perspective on this, not to have a pun, but is that the that that section of the plan is kind of far in the distance and is not, is not really prominent. I wonder whether we should just have a note that says that this does not reflect current conditions. I don't know. I don't know at this point whether it's worth requiring.
Chair, what we could do, if you'd like, is perhaps add some language in there, clarifying that where any discrepancies exist, and then reference the the two plan sheets that are, that actually show, I think it's Scott Cameron's civil plan sheet and Bobby Look's landscape plan sheet, that those would control.
That would be, that would be a good way to do it. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Were there any comments on the?
Yeah, Rick, this is Don. I'm sorry. Just somewhat following up from Beth's comment and Alden's comment. I didn't see, but that's only because I'm looking at a iPad screen of the civil drawings and the and the architect on the landscape drawings. So I would like to ask the applicant, the fence that Alden referred to, is that shown on the civil drawings or site plan drawings? And secondly, if so, I think the applicant said it would be a three or four foot picket fence and I'm assuming perhaps he said that under Alden asked the question, we didn't want to see as a, I don't know. The applicant's smart, but you know, a chain link fence or a six-foot solid one. So I just didn't know if it's done on there, does the rest of the board think it could just be on the civil drawings? It's not saying three foot, four foot, whatever. We think white picket fence or something like that, if that's the intent of the board. That's all I got.
Okay. So I guess your first question is, does it show on the civil plan?
I couldn't find it, but then again, I, you know, sometimes the plans are pretty small, and I'm just looking at a small, it's maybe if I had thirty-four by forty-four drawings, I'd see it, but I didn't see it.
Mr. Chair, this is Scott Cameron. If I could opine, the, so I just want to keep in mind, the civil plans are not going to show all of the landscape feature details. For example, we also don't show the tables, all the benches, things of that nature. Those are kind of superficial. They don't play into the, you know, the site plan is intended in, you know, for the permit set here to illustrate, you know, where are we going to park cars? Where are we going to put driveways? We focus on a lot of the perimeter fencing, which are more related to screening. I think, you know, certainly, there's, there's a long ways to go yet for this team in the, in the construction phase as far as coordinating all of that. We will start getting more involved in that on a construction drawing level where we now need to start looking at where are we putting footings or placement things that might interfere with utilities, and we're starting to get into the nitty gritty of it. So you're absolutely right, we're not showing every little detail of the, of the site finishes on the civil plans, but that's, that's completely intentional. It would just, it would really overwhelm the civil plans. And at this phase, we're not, we're not near that level of detail.
Sure, I understand. So let's go to the landscape plans. And yes, Bob actually pointed to something, I think, on one of the plans.
Yeah, this is Bob. You're like, Rick, I think, you know, it's just an oversight in terms of the different details. I think it would occur basically in the area where we've got on that, that is our landscape plan. So basically where it says extended structure below right in that area is where the fence would be, and we didn't get into detailing it at this point. I think we were focused on the other things, but it would be an ornamental metal fence in the realm of about three feet high.
So, so Bob, how would that work? Would it run from the building across the lawn area there to, and then across the path? And how, where would it end?
I don't know that it would do much. I mean, again, we haven't gotten into the details of this, but it would probably go from the corner of the building, almost following, but probably off structure, just off it, following that same line, and it may just stop you know, on the other side of the path. It's intended to be more of a deterrent than it is intending to be, you know, for security, so to speak.
So I guess, given the questions from the members of the board, perhaps, Andy, we could just include a some sort of condition that requires you know, any additional fencing to be approved by the planning director?
Sure, I truly comfortable with that, or if you wanted to indicate the ornamental fence being a metal in three feet in height. Either way, it's perfectly fine, in my opinion. I think that would address the need to close the loop there and make sure that that detail is adequate for the project, by the way.
What the members of the board feel about that?
One, one question along with that, is there, is it intended to have access to the live work units through that way? Is there going to be an opening there, or is it just a fence?
It would have a gate there.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
I guess rather than specify the fence on the fly here, my preference would be to leave the final approval up to the planning director. Just because there may be other small issues like that that come up, and we don't want to have them prohibited because they weren't on the plan.
True, Chair, if it works for you, we could add that to special condition number two, which addresses the submission of signage details after the initial approval. And that could be done or dealt with in the same manner for the applicant to submit that had it reviewed here and then approved if acceptable. If there's any issue, of course, we'd raise that concern with them prior to approval.
That sounds good to me. Board members comfortable with that approach? If anybody has a.
Okay, with me, Don.
Yes, it's fine.
So going back to the standard conditions, the only thing that I found in the standard conditions was the last one, which duplicates one of the special conditions, this recognition of adjacent business and industrial uses also appears in special conditions. I would take it out of the standard and just leave leave it in the special conditions. Did anybody else have any comments on any of the standard conditions? If not, moving on to special conditions. On the number four, I had a, just a wording change that I would like to propose. It says to ensure adequate pedestrian access for the public both on to and from the site. And I would like to suggest because this is part of the bike connection too, to ensure adequate pedestrian and bicycle access for the public. And then I would say to, from, and across the site. And it changed.
Sorry, could you just repeat your?
Where it says both on to and from, I would say to, from, and across. Just take out both on.
Got it. Any other additions?
Nope, I would take out, take out the word both too. Then I did not have any other comments on any of the special conditions. Did anybody else have any concerns or questions about these?
Rick, this is Don. I had one or two, if I may.
Go ahead.
We just get to them. It's I'm using my own versus what Andy's got. I'm sorry, Andy, that's why I'm going through my, my own PDF doc right now. I'm sorry. Let's see, item number and incidentally, they're both mine. For item number eleven, the Route One Hill Street sidewalk connection. And then I see number twelve, proposed the acceleration. I guess, again, it's my, or I probably would have used the word proposed only because the Route One is dependent upon the state, and that's why I think the word proposed is there. And similarly, I think the Route One Hill Street connection is thirty-five thousand, thirty thousand dollars is there, but you actually, that work is really predicated upon the the applicant, or perhaps Andy, and as I'm talking out loud, perhaps I've convinced myself it doesn't need that. I, am I correct in assuming the way this is worded, if the applicant is unsuccessful in negotiating with the butter, the town, the city, actually, it doesn't say it, but I guess the city would use right of eminent domain or whatever to secure that land for the sidewalk connection?
Yeah, I think you have that correct for our prior discussions.
Okay. Okay. The other item I have is item number fourteen, and really, if the applicant's okay with it, I'm okay with just based upon my experience in this in industry where it talks about it took, will be installed as posed in a schematic form. And I'm okay with saying install that I would have perhaps said and, and available to be interconnected by the utility. And the reason I say that, and again, if the applicant's okay with this, because this is the first this is the first occupancy permit, and I'd hate to have something, especially with our affordable housing to be held up because National Grid, and it has happened, has taken literally months, if not longer, to connect a solar facility. So that was my only issue there. You know, I could have seen maybe the I don't know what the twentieth or whatever we wanted to do, but again, it's up to the applicant. Again, I was thinking more about the availability of this affordable unit in the event National Grid isn't doing something.
I'm sorry, Don, I just want to make sure I, if I could, I just want to make sure that I have your editor language, if I understand that correctly as I'm showing it, and also defer to the applicant if they want to speak to that. Do I have that language correct?
Sure, I would have used the word after installed and available to be interconnected by the electric utility.
Got it. Does the applicant wish to speak to that?
Well, I guess the point being is, this is Lumen Akutia. We're obviously planning on doing it and want to do it, but if there should be and there probably will be some holdup with the, with, with the electric company, that we not be held up receiving our CO because of that. So I'm not sure if this language would address that or not, but.
Well, the last sentence refers to the installation being completed prior to the first occupancy permit. So I guess I'll defer to the board on how you'd like to handle that, if there's any concern there.
Right, I guess the point being, we, you know, trying, making sure that we will make every effort to do it, but I mean, for some unforeseen reason, and when you're dealing with the utility companies, you never know. And, you know, we may not be able to get connected for one reason or another.
Andy, I think this, I think this covers it. I think it says is the installation and available to be interconnected by the electrical utility has to be, has to happen prior to the grant of the first occupancy permit. It doesn't say that, that the actual interconnection has to happen before that, that occupancy permit.
So it says the installation is, the installation is done, but not necessarily the interconnection, right?
Yep. So I think this would not hold them up at all.
The only problem there is, I mean, it's quite an expensive ideal. And if you go ahead and put on a solar array system that never gets in connect, that never has an interconnection, you know, you just got equipment sitting on the roof for months or years.
I guess, on the other hand, wouldn't it be better to have done the initial installation and rather than disrupt the people living there, if you come back six months or a year later?
Well, we would do all the, obviously, we would all do all of the infrastructure. I think actually putting the panels up on the roof might be really quick, and the technology in that industry moves so fast, you know, panel sizes come down very quickly and to install panels that aren't going to be used and get deferred for six months to a year or two. Would probably not, it's, wouldn't be a good investment. I'm not even sure I could get a finance.
Understood. Don, do you have any suggestions on that?
Yes, actually, I do, with the applicant, if I was doing it, I would wait to basically the last unit is completed because the technologies is changing and the applicant is correct. The longer you wait, the worse solar energy, the more renewable, more sustainable we can get versus use of today's technology versus two years technology, or even six months, it's rapidly changing. So I put that wording in there because I would be okay if the board was okay before the the last five, you know, occupancy, or whatever you wanted to do. This would give the applicant time to get the best available technology and be the most sustainable and renewable for his facility.
My concern with that would be that this is not like a subdivision where you're constructing units in sequence. I would think that you'd basically have your final occupancy units very close to the same time as you have your first ones. So I wonder if there's some wording we could have here that says that provide all of the infrastructure. I'm not sure what the word would be, that all the infrastructure for the solar arrays by a certain date, because if they even with the last occupancy permit, if the if National Grid or whoever, you know, takes a year to do it, it's not going to matter whether it's the first occupancy permit or the last occupancy permit, they're going to be so close together.
Yeah, I mean.
That's, sorry.
I would, that would be fine. I mean, we'd certainly put in all the infrastructure because we have every intention of doing the solar. So we could install all of the infrastructure. And then once we get to go ahead with National Grid, install the panels. And Don knows a lot more about this industry than I do, but is there a possibility that National, that the grid would not allow us to interconnect? Don't they have certain capacities for that? I guess if we go up in that metering.
Yes. Yes, there is something called, you could be the straw that breaks the camel's back, and kindly folks, is if this facility would cause an increase, you could find that you, they would have to pay so much more money for the upgrade. It just is not economically viable. And it would be more cost effective for them to participate in what they call community solar somewhere else in the in the, in the state. So that is theoretically possible, and it actually has happened in some residential app. That is theoretically possible, and it actually has happened in some residential applications in Newburyport where someone wanted to put a solar facility. And National Grid said, if you do that, you've got to put a new transformer in, but it costs almost as much as the whole. Solar, solar array they have on the roof. So Lou is right on that. That is, that is possible. And there is solar right next to their facility on the market, so.
With the, with what we're trying to do here. Be addressed by changing the wording to say that the. That the installation of the. Infrastructure to support solar arrays on the roof will be completed prior to the grant of the first occupancy permit?
Yeah, you know, you know, probably better one would have been in solar ready, and this way they could have a conduit, and if it doesn't work, they could do later. And kindly. I think this, this whole solar array was, was actually. Proposed by the applicant is drawings kindly. If we didn't, if it wasn't there, I'm not sure that the board would have asked for solar array. We don't necessarily ask. For solar arrays and other facilities. At least we have to date that, not that we shouldn't, so.
I believe that Joe, the architect may be able to speak to this issue from the applicant side.
Sure.
Yeah, we did show the solar rate to begin with. This is Joe Circovich from Arrow Street, and was a suggestion we, we thought was beneficial to the residents of the, the complex in, in, in general. I think making it solar ready would possibly solve the issue that we're talking about here, though. If Lou is in agreement with that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I would have every intention of doing solar panels. You know, but if, if, if we are the straw that breaks the camel's back, so to speak, and. It isn't going to be financially feasible to do it. We just can't do it. But I, I certainly would, you know, at some point we'd be able to come online. So I would definitely agree to, you know, making the building solar ready with the conduits. And I'm not sure what else. Maybe Don could give us a little insight on what else might be appropriate for that.
But it seems to me is.
All right, okay, good, Rick. Sorry.
I was going to say that the, just the first sentence is okay, and the second sentence could be replaced by. Something to the effect that the, the building shall be made solar ready. Consistent therewith prior to the grant of the first occupancy permit.
I think that works, Rick.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Great.
Okay, we'll make that change accordingly. I believe the chair just wanted to note, I believe that Bonnie might be having an issue with microphone, but she did want to address, speak. I don't know if she's able to now. Okay, she may be joining us if she's able to patch in with the audio better. We'll, I'll note that.
Okay, thank you.
Rick. I just have one other comment, and I think I'm done with all those special conditions, and this really is something new. Relevant to one of the comments made in, in by the public. I, I think. Most of the items, one of them was pointing out the construction time was, is square, is, is in there, and. There's a pre-construction meeting, Andy noted, and I think with respect to noise, there is a noise ordinance. Not sure that. We need something more than that. However, someone talked about the HVAC. I can appreciate. The items that perhaps some of the folks in the back, they feel with some of the industrial park and have that noise on the roof will carry over to their facilities. So I don't necessarily think we need a noise test, but, you know, i- if, if the rest of the board and the applicant thinks it makes sense. I would have just had what I consider a very simple calculation by the mechanical engineer. To show what the noise attenuation is at the property line. It's a very simple calculation, especially if on the roof, they have any type of, of, of. Noise deadening, filters, baffles, screening, et cetera. So I don't think we actually need to do the test, but I think it's reasonably accurate. Just to provide something to show that the noise is within our, our city ordinance.
So while we're on the subject of, of mechanical noise, I, I wonder if the architect could just address. The mechanical equipment that is on the roof and how it is screened and. You know, whether they perceive any, any noise issues related to that equipment or not. This is Joe Circovich. We don't have a mechanical design yet, but I think that our intention is to do something similar. That was done on one and three Boston Way. Where there are many splits within the units and condenser units on the, on the roof. And will those be screened at all? They will be screened. Yes, we do have a parapet planned for, for, for all those units. And that's part of the design guidelines of the smart growth district that we will be following as well. Thank you.
So going back to, to Don's previous comment, that could perhaps be a, a special condition to. That the applicant should demonstrate. That the HVAC equipment will meet city noise standards.
Sorry, Chair, that would be prior occupancy, I assume, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Thanks, Rick.
Great.
Is, excuse me, this is Lumen Akutia. Does the city have a noise standard ordinance of some sort?
Yeah, Lou, we can play to that after the meeting, but there are some standards in there that speak to that, that sort of threshold.
Okay. I just want to, want to have built this entire building and then have somebody arbitrarily saying it's too loud and not being able to occupy the building. I can tell you this, that I, at one Boston Way. I don't think I've ever even heard a unit these, these mini splits. Are very, very quiet, but, but I, I get the need for ensuring that, you know, we, we don't create a nuisance from a noise perspective. But as long as there's some objective standard that's reasonable that we can comply with. So that we're not in a dispute, well, we think it's too loud when, when we say, well, no, we don't.
Um, are there any other comments about any of the? Conditions here, special or standard? I don't know whether Bonnie's been able to join us yet or not.
Yeah, Bonnie, are you able to, to address the board? You'll have to unmute on your end as well. I believe that if you're, if you're not familiar with it, you might have to press the key sequence star six to unmute. Fortunately, that doesn't seem to be working. I don't know what the issue might be.
Okay. Well, while we're waiting, I just had another question, Andy. And I probably should have asked this a long time ago. The. The site consists of two lots. Is there a? Are we going to be required to sign a plan merging the two lots at some point?
I know that's not required here, so for the purposes of zoning and permitting, the, the two lots qualify for this without the need to, you know, join the lots.
Okay, so there's no, there's no issue with a, a side yard requirement?
Yeah, correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like Bonnie to join us if she can. Does anybody else have any other comments, concerns on this?
Mr. Chair, this is Scott Cameron.
Yes.
I just, just to follow up on the, on the lot line, what? I, I agree with Andy, nothing needed here. We may come back with an A and R to consolidate the two lots for. Financing other things down the road, just to consolidate it all, but. That has nothing to do with the purpose, and I just don't want you to be surprised if we show up with an A and R plan in a couple of months.
Chair, if I could just, one note, there was a special, I had a conversation with the applicant today. And this is regarding special condition number, I think it's. Let's see. The MASTOT special condition number twelve. This is the deceleration lane, or sorry, not, not the deceleration lane, sorry, the. The curb cuts. Sorry, I think it's actually the general condition.
This is the approval by the city of the design of a curb cut?
Yeah, sorry, it's actually fifteen. Sorry, fifteen here, just to, the applicant had just asked for clarification in here to include the, the fact that because of the MASTOT right away, that we include MASTOT in, in addition to the Department of Public Services. So. We certainly agree with that and suggest that we just add that in there.
Sure, makes sense. Any word from Bonnie on this yet?
Uh, no, I believe she may be all set up, but again, I'll certainly let you know if a, an indication otherwise.
No comment, she says. Got a text from her. She will vote by text to the chair if that is legal. What do you think, Andy? Is that legal?
I'd be preferable to have it on the, the, I, I guess I'm not sure what the audio issue is, I guess. You know, certainly we could note that for the record here, but it'd be preferable to have that in the, in the meeting wording itself or the.
Well, why don't we?
If, you know, for instance, if Bonnie wanted to send an email to me, I could just pull it up on the screen just to show for the record, perhaps that might be helpful.
That would be, that'd be great. Yep, okay. So Bonnie, if you, once we get to a, a vote, if you could. Send an email to Andy and he will show that email. So it's a record of your vote. Well, if, if that is all we have, I guess it's time to entertain a motion on this application and. The motion would be.
Excuse me, Rick.
Yes.
May, may we hold off for literally one minute? Only because Bonnie's coming over, so she'll be able to vote.
Okay.
Okay.
We should have some themes, theme music going while we're waiting. This is great. Andy, do you think we're going to be able to be meeting in person next month?
Yeah, actually, we did a test run, if you will, with the city council for one of their committee meetings the other day. That seemed to go reasonably well. I have to listen to the audio recording because I want to make sure that the. The one of the issues that we've encountered is that the audio in the room is actually worse than those who are connecting on their computers from home. So I just want to make sure that that's running smoothly before we have any of our adjudicatory hearings via Zoom. But yes, they definitely. Would anticipate that in the near future because we'll be, by the way, I did have some discussions about whether or not we'd be using the council chambers or the auditorium or the senior center. There's still an expectation we would use the senior center, which we had worked with them on reservations for a go-forward basis. So. We'll look back on that. So board members might want to expect to be meeting at the senior center for the in-person or hybrid meeting setup.
Thank you. That'd be great. So. Andy, could you? Read the draft, the motion that you're proposing for this?
Sorry, I was muted there. Approval of the decision here, it's referenced.
Yeah, I, I probably have it somewhere here, but I've lost the, the paper, so the.
Yeah. Yep. So the motion would be to defer to the board, but if the board wishes to make a motion to approve the smart growth district plan approval. Application for one sixty-six to one sixty-eight Route One. In accordance with the draft decision provided by the Office of Planning and Development, including the waivers, findings, and special conditions contained therein, including any revisions incorporated this evening.
Yes, would anybody like to make that motion?
Rick, it's Don. I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the role, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Heather?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. We have a vote of six to one. And we need, do we need six votes on this, Andy?
Yep, thank you. We're, we're good. So we're all set with this. It has been approved successfully.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the applicant. We've done, Bonnie will be at City Hall to sign the decision.
Okay, this is Lumen Akutia. I want, I want to thank the board. I know it's, it's been six months, I guess, through, since we. Started this process in October, and I appreciate your time and effort and. And our ability to kind of go back and forth and, and come with a project that I think will, will all be very pleased, but at the end of the day. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bonnie, we should have that final version ready and printed out by midday tomorrow, so you'll be able to listen by your convenience after that.
Could I be notified when that's ready and then I'll come right over?
Yes, definitely. Well, Caitlin can send you an email to let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks. So the next item on our agenda is the application of Caswell Restaurant Group for DOD special permit. For seventeen to twenty-one State Street. And who is here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Costa. On behalf of the Caswell Group. And with me this evening is Jeff and Nancy Caswell. And also Julie Meridian of Seager Architects, and maybe we could go to the presentation.
I just one question, Lisa, is there a Dan, I don't want to mispronounce his last name, but Dan perhaps joining you as well. I just want to make sure he's able to join you if that's the case.
Dan, yeah, so I don't believe that he's here this evening.
No, Dan, make it. This is Julia with Seager Architects. I am speaking for Seager Architects tonight.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
And I'm getting some feedback, so I'm not. Not sure if, if, uh. Okay.
Yeah, if any voter one who's not speaking could mute themselves, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So as the board knows, we made an initial presentation a couple of meetings ago. And there were a number of comments and questions that the board had, mostly related to looking for more details. On the proposed windows and some corrections on the plans to clean those up. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So what we've done in the revised drawings and presentation is to try to address those issues that were raised by the board. Looking for more detail. And so we've revised the drawings to show the delineation of the sign panels in the banner sign. That are original and those which include etchings where the letters are versus the plastic molded. Replacement pieces that exist in the banner sign. We've also clarified the existing painted lettering will be all removed. We have provided the dimensions of the existing glass exposure versus the proposed glass exposure on the storefront. The, the petitioners have also determined that an aluminum frame is available. And are proposing the aluminum frame to be consistent with the existing materials. You might recall, our original proposal was perhaps to do stainless steel, but they have found aluminum. We have shown the stacking width of the windows when open, which are now to scale on the plan, so you can see those. The materials of the black surface panels are now shown on the plan to delineate, to delineate which are the glass and which are laminate. We have provided about a month ago, a sample of the window in the planning office for the board to take a look at. We've determined that we're not going to be using storm windows, so that discussion is now no longer needed. And they're now showing the plastic panels and the banner signs and the laminate replacement panels in the black areas. To be replaced with historic glass pieces as provided by a Tim Dunn, who's a purveyor of this type of glass. So if you go to the next slide, please. So just as a reminder, I don't think I need to really remind anybody, but this is a, so this proposal deals with the banner sign above the windows, and then, of course, the, the storefront windows. Next slide, please. And again, just some up close, one of the questions we got from staff was, can you really show us up close a little bit better about the etched glass versus the replacement? Plastic that exists. So you'll see in this, in this slide very clearly. That EW is on plastic as are the TO and the RE. The rest are etched glass, and we're going to get a little bit up close, more up close on those. Next, please. And so you can see that the file is in the end of the lettering there is in etched glass with paint, which will be removed. Next slide, please. Again, here's a different view of this. As I said before, the applicant, and I'm going to talk a little bit about this. Again, here's a different view of this. Um, as I said before, the applicant, and I'm going to talk a little bit about this in response to um, some comments the preservation trust made to the planning office, uh, met with the preservation trust, uh, then engaged in discussions with, uh, Mr. Dunn relative to the glass. And they will be replacing these plastic panels that currently exist with, uh, matching glass, uh, that matches a historic glass, both on the banner sign and I'll show you in a little bit, um, also on the black uh, areas which, um, have been replaced with laminate, um, as well as on that post which was replaced with laminate. Next slide, please. Again, another view of the sign. So you can see the condition of those plastic pieces. Next slide, please. And finally, just a little more up close. So it's pretty clear where those plastic pieces are. Next slide, please. Again, there you see the etching which the board was, um, wondering about and that black paint will all be cleaned off um, as recommended by, um, Dr. Salwen. Next slide, please. Again, there's the plastic pieces that will be removed and replaced with, uh, matching historic glass. Next slide, please. And there's the etching again. Next slide. Again, another view of the etching, which the paint will be cleaned off. Next slide. Another view of the other letters. Next slide. Um, and here's the, two more of the plastic panels. Next slide, please. So here's an existing, uh, conditions, um, sheet, uh, and I'm, for the next two slides, I'm going to turn it over to um, Julia to talk about, um, the changes she made in the plan.
Hi, this is Julia with Seeger Architects. Um, so as, as you can see on this one, we, the changes that we made is we, um, are showing you the panels that are to be replaced, as Lisa was just speaking to. And, uh, you can also see the actual brine lettering, um, has been placed on this instead of, you know, my font that I tried to use. This is approximation of the lettering and the size that would be on the banner. Um, and you can see we have the stacked windows shown, um, how they will stack. They go out to, uh, an angle and, um, so you can see how they stack against the walls on either side on that upper plan. Um, and we just clarified a few dimensions. Uh, last time you're looking for, um, clear width opening and, um, clear height openings. So we have detailed those dimensions for you. And those are the major changes on this sheet. Uh, next slide, please. Here's a rendering, um, someone on the board or we were asked to show what it would look like with the etched uh, lettering remaining behind the brine. It was really hard to show it as you'd see, actually see it and still show the letters that are etched behind. So this is approximation of the existing letters that are there with the brine over them. Uh, next slide, please. And this shows what it looks like cleaned up with all of the, uh, letters cleaned and the brine sign not over the letters.
Thank you, Julia. So, um, the next slide, the next slides I have, if, um, Julie, maybe could you mute your mic? Um, the next slides I have, um, are, uh, the conditions, um, or the criteria that we went through before. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know that we need to go through them again. Um, I'm happy to do so, but, um, certainly our response to those, um, criteria don't change. Would you like me to run through them again? Or, um, would you like us to take questions from the board?
I think moving to questions from the board would be the appropriate. I don't think you need to go through these at this point.
Thank you.
So members of the board, you have questions for the applicant?
Uh, Bonnie here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Finally. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Um, I'm very pleased with the idea of replacing the, I'm going to start with the banner. Uh, I'm very pleased with the idea of replacing the plastic with glass. Obviously, the glass is not going to be etched for the missing letters. That's fine. Uh, my concern is about, um, adding the brine lettering directly on the glass. And I'm wondering how other board members feel about this idea and of course the applicant, and that is to make a sign that has brine lettering on it and attach it to the, to the front over the door. Um, somehow offset the, from the banner so that it wouldn't be written directly on the banner would, but would be on a sign that hung just as flush to the banner as possible. What do people think about that on the board before I ask the applicant to respond?
Bonnie, I, from my point of view, I, I had the same question, how the, we're just looking at, for example, the eye which comes down, um, on the, the raised surface and then crosses a, an incised surface. It just, it seems odd to me that that would, that that would actually work, um, and look, and look good. I don't know. And, and as, uh, as Julia said, it's, it's difficult to actually show how that would work, um, to illustrate how that would work. And it's, it is somewhat hard to imagine. So I had the same concern. And I would certainly be interested in knowing whether the applicant would be interested in, um, or had any thoughts about hanging, hanging a brine sign in front of and against the historic facade.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the applicant, uh, the applicant is fine with that. Um, we request that, um, that it be able to get approval of that sign from staff, um, so that we can move forward, um, but the applicant is fine with that.
Thank you. Were there any other comments from the board on that? Like, thank you for that response.
Yeah, yeah. Quick comment, Rick. I mean, I, I have taken a walk around a, a couple of times and, and when I look at brine next to Carmine's and next to the paddle in, all three have blade signs, uh, which, which work very well. Carmine's and the paddle in supplement the blade sign with much smaller scale signage at the scale of their front doors. And seems to work, uh, just fine from a pedestrian point of view at the sidewalk, the blade signs deal with the kind of broader context. And, and I just wonder whether, uh, the applicant has thought about that scale of signage supplementing the blade sign rather than the complication of, of dealing with uh, the, the glass band above the entry. You know, could there be something at, at a slightly smaller scale uh, in, in the entry vest of rule that, that works to identify?
So, so your, your, your question is not simply about making it smaller, but about moving it off the, off the.
I, I, I'm, I'm saying that just in, in context with other similar uses on that block, um, you know, the, the blade sign sort of deals with a broader scale of, of State Street. And, and then, then there is something that is a smaller scale at the scale of the front door, uh, that works from a pedestrian point of view. And I just wonder, given all the comments about the complexity of dealing with this historic zone at the storefront, whether it's better to just stay away from that and, and do some smaller signage in, in the entry vest area, in, in addition to the blades on.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Um, so I would, I would make a couple of comments to that. Um, first of all, that there's a pre-existing sign on this building, um, that don't exist on the other buildings. Um, I would note that Lively Kids right next door has a banner sign, pretty large, right across the top of their entire storefront. Um, and so it's a pre-existing non-conforming sign technically in the, in the downtown. Um, so the other window, the other signs that you refer to, those are painted on the windows. Um, I'm informed. So, um, we request to use the same sign face that, um, is already existing. I'm happy to change it over to, uh, what the vice chair and chair have suggested. Um, but this is a little different situation, uh, particularly where the, the foul's architectural sign, if you will, the large blade sign remains. Um, so, uh, I'd request the board allow us to do what has been suggested be done by the, the chair and the vice chair.
Thank you. Any other, um, comments or questions about the sign right now? Okay. Heather, were you about to ask something or it just popped up my screen?
Oh, sorry. I meant to take my hand down. I was commenting or I was going to comment earlier that I also liked not painting over this glass. Um, just for the sake of it's, at some point Brian would move on maybe to another space and I didn't like that permanency. So I was just agreeing with you guys.
Thank you.
And Rick, I just raised my hand too, but I, I agree too. Um, you know, I think the, um, foul sign, you know, it is something that has been there for a long time and I think is important to the building. And I think the less that it is changed, the happier, um, I would give it. And so I guess my concern too with attaching something in the front is whether it can be done without damaging the glass. So that would just be.
I think, yeah, I think if we, if we went in that direction, if we decide to go in that direction, uh, and, uh, as, um, the attorney, attorney Mead said, if we, um, make it, make a condition that is subject to approval by the planning director, um, then he could ensure that, I think in terms of final, the mechanism of doing that.
Uh, Chair, this is Andy Port. I just asked for clarification if the board is expecting any, uh, particular backing on the lettering that would be placed there, right? Uh, as far as materials or whatnot.
I haven't heard that. I, I, I think it's, you know, to try, try to achieve the same effect as is being shown, uh, in, in this image, but without painting on the panels is the sense that I'm getting from the board.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to the windows. Questions or, um, discussion about the proposed window system? Uh, is your hand still up, Heather, for that or is that, uh, from before? Nope, thank you. Uh, let's see. Beth?
Sorry. Um, so I was just interested in the change where there will no longer be storm windows. And so what the plan is as far as, um, whether those windows are going to be airtight. Um, I would just hate to see the replacement be done and then, you know, have it be problematic and then it's going to be hard to undo. So I'm just curious as to what, um, your plan is to, for heating and whatnot, if there are no storm windows.
So, um, I'm going to ask Jeff Caswell to be recognized on this because he's going to, uh, work on the, uh, as a heating and cooling issue with that. Um, and so he'll address that issue. Um, I hope that you all got down to the planning office to see, um, the size of these windows. You can understand, um, how, how thick they are, which are, you know, thicker than the ones that exist there today and provide more insulation. So with that, I'm going to have Jeff talk about the fact that they've determined they don't need storm windows.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Uh, yeah, Lisa spoke the, oh, sorry. Lisa spoke to the fact that the proposed windows are probably twice, if not three times the thickness of the existing replacement windows we have now. So they're going to be a lot thicker and we're going to install Mitsubishi units up in the softets inside the unit that's going to wash the windows. So that's going to stop. It's going to be better. Thermal break with the new windows that we're going to put in. We're also going to supplement that with Mitsubishi units up in the softets.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh.
Um, I, I would just like to respectfully disagree with, with everything that was just said relative to the thermal performance of a storefront like this. This, this is, this product is an interior mall security screen. Go to the website for this manufacturer. That's what it is. That's why there is no, uh, weather tight joint between the panels. Uh, there is no weather stripping in, in the, the metal component of, of the system. Uh, there is no thermal break uh, in the metal, uh, portion of the system. So there's a potential for frost and, and, you know, condensation on the inside. This is not a system that is meant to be an exterior closure for a building in New England. It, we asked the last time for more details related to this. Basically shop drawing level detail so that we could understand how this system meet the, the surrounding historic storefront. Uh, when I looked at the details on this company's website, and by the way, I did go to City Hall and I did look at the, the materials that, that were presented there. Uh, if I go on the website, uh, these panels, I believe, are, are hung from above, uh, which means there needs to be structure above that supports these panels. There's a track that they ride in. That track is supported by either a piece of steel or, or something substantial enough that, that it supports the weight of these units. I don't see any details about that. Um, the, the idea that you can have a storefront that is fundamentally open at its joints with a number of joints that you're showing here in New England and not talk about the energy usage and what would be required to keep the interior environment uh, at a, at appropriate temperature. I just don't understand what's being proposed here. Um, on the North Shore, there are, are two very good custom aluminum and glass, uh, contractors. There's Ipswich Bay Glass just down the road. Uh, there's Salem Glass. I don't know if you've ever talked to them, uh, about how they might address a situation like this. Uh, but th- this is just a completely inappropriate use for the system that is being proposed here. It's not meant to be an exterior wall. Uh, so I ju- I just don't know how you can present this as, as a credible solution.
Hi, this is Julia with Seeger Architects. Um, we have worked with the rep for this, uh, window manufacturer for quite a while now, trying to find the solution for this. And these windows are made for protected exterior locations. We have an existing steel beam above that we will be using for the structure. Um, we'll also be tucking up that into, um, that existing, to, to be able to have the window opening similar to what it is now. We are able to tuck that up into that existing, um, awning that you see there, the header, and we will be able to come up on the bottom as well. So that the, the glass will look similar in height to the existing. And then um, doing that is how we will create the thermal break from the outside. The current plate glass system right now is not energy efficient whatsoever. Um, and being historic, this doesn't need to meet any, um, energy efficiency codes currently. When the windows are closed with all of those joints, they are all sealed. And those joints seal tight to each other for weather.
Not according to the website.
Yeah, so we, we have worked with the, uh, rep and, um, according to the website, it does say that it is used for exterior locations. It says, um, that right after, right on the, well, the information that I believe you forwarded to us as well, it says on there. Um, exterior locations. Um, and having the heat, um, up above blowing down will keep any, um, any cooling from those windows that you would feel otherwise as well. Uh, currently, I believe that people don't even want to sit near those windows that exist. Um, it is very cold using that existing storefront plate glass window.
Well, it's interesting that the photo that you show is, appears to be an interior mall environment. Uh, I did look at the website. Uh, I didn't see. I didn't see any indication that that the glass joints would be sealed. They will be open. It's it's not an airtight wall. And and you're you're talking about details rather than showing us details. This, this is an important historic storefront in the city and and you're talking about doing things rather than providing the level of detail that we asked you for the last time. So I I just, I I don't have any confidence that that this is a solution that would work at at really any level.
I I have a question just about the the picture that is is shown here. And and trying to imagine how this works on the base of the the proposed, you know, the window opening at at the where it's proposed to be used. You know, this, you know, clearly this is a different format because it has a a an angled track. So the window kind of goes along the major part of the window, then it goes up and and around with that angled track at the top. But it appears that the the window, the base of the window is just sort of floating along the floor. How is, how are you proposing to have this? How does this work? In the in the context of of the the Brian window? Is it is it again, just sort of floating at the bottom there as you move it from the open to the closed position? Is it is it meant to be stable? Would it be stable? How how does this, how does this work in that configuration without sitting on a floor like as it is in this image?
So that there is also a track that it is in the floor as it is on the top. And so that will be the on the window sill. It's it's not just floating. So it it is a sturdy system that can push up against the wall.
Okay. I just don't see that. I was I was looking at the the president, the January presentation and the image that you showed there. It wasn't really clear that that was what was happening. So there are there are tracks on the top and the bottom.
Yes.
Miss Richard.
Hey, Rick. This is Don. I would just like to reiterate a comment or comments by Bob and perhaps similar to what you just said. I I believe we should have some form of details on this, you know, for you to provide these questions. We had previously asked for some type of details. I appreciate you may not get full shop drawings because generally that means, you know, the you have to place in order. I can do must be a balance between the two. But I think what I'm hearing is we want some more type of detail without some type of detail. I'll let it up to you or others, but I just don't see us moving, me moving forward on this. Thank you.
And I'd like to back that up. This is Bonnie. I'm more visual and I would like a photograph or two of the use as proposed, not what we've seen so far. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, might I?
Yes, you may.
So these are construction details that are really the purview of the building department. And I'm sure I'm struggling to understand how it is that the planning board is getting into the installation and construction details of these windows. I will also tell you that I have been informed by my client that they are not able to get shop drawings without placing an order.
Understand the comment about shop drawings and I and I don't disagree with that, but there could be larger scale details developed by the architect. There could be wall sections through the storefront. And the reason why we're interested in this is this is a historic storefront. And what's being proposed is an off the shelf product, which seems very inappropriate for this use. And and I would ask again, if you have talked to anyone else, if you have talked to anyone like Ipswich Bay Glass or Salem Glass, someone who specializes in custom glass and aluminum enclosures, have have you talked to them at all about whether they could provide anything like this? Or is this the only source of information that you have really pursued? But, you know, this, with all due respect, this is a very important storefront and not talking about these details and the interface between this new system and all of the historic components, we would not be doing our job.
I I will let Julia and Jeff talk to you about how many different folks they've spoken to about windows for this the storefront. But I would reiterate to the board their position with regard to the DOD and what the criteria is. With all due respect to the member and quite honestly, the fact that we disagree that we should be here at all. So here we are and we have provided the board, we thought, with everything they wanted. We have agreed to change an existing condition that we weren't required to related to the signs and the replacement of glass that has long since been gone and replaced with plastic and laminate. And have agreed to the changes of the name Brian on the sign and have provided you the details that are available to us with regard to the windows. And have received, of course, a variance for the operation of the windows, which of course is now not necessary. So again, I beg to differ with the member and I would quite frankly like the board to point to me in the ordinance where the methods of construction are within your purview.
Rick, may I speak?
Yes.
This is Bonnie.
Yes.
I'm not so concerned about the method of construction as I am that the final use, this product will work as proposed. And all I'm asking for is reassurance through more details on the drawings without going to the level of construction details and photographs of its application, the way the applicant would like to use it here so that I can feel assured that what we are proving is gonna work the way it's meant to work. I think it's a great idea. I wish I've had more confidence in it. And if it means a little more research, either with this provider or one of the other providers that Bob has suggested, I just need more confidence before I can can vote on an approval here. And it's it's not about all these other details that the applicant's attorney has brought up. I don't question any anything else but the actual windows, their operation and their energy efficiency.
So again, actually, that's an interesting point about energy efficiency. So I would also like to suggest that the board should point out in the criteria under the DOD where energy efficiency in a historic structure is required. Nonetheless, I have Dan Rick, Dan Rickarelli. I believe you might see Andy on now and Dan works with Julia, the both experts and architects who have designed this and worked with the supplier. And perhaps Dan can answer some of these questions as well. Dan?
Could Dan perhaps be underneath someone else's name or?
Let me see here. So I was told he was on.
Is a phone call in listener. Could that be him?
It could be.
Dan, are you with us?
Andy.
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
I just wanna speak to Bonnie's point. I totally understand where everyone's coming from here. You gotta realize something too that we would not put something in here that wouldn't work, that would hinder our business. We went to the board. We spent a year going back and forth trying to find windows that would meet and match historically what you guys want. We went through multiple vendors. It took us almost a year to find this. Was this the ideal solution I was looking for? No, I liked the other ones I proposed. I went back and you guys wanna go historic. I was meeting with historic people. I've done everything everyone's asked. The sign, I don't really care about the bronze sign. I suggested painting it because I didn't want it to permanently damage it. Paint can be wiped off. You want us to stand it off and put Brian on it? I'll do that. And these windows will work. That was my concern too. I didn't wanna put something in here that didn't work. That's what took months and months to actually find some. Not only that, you gotta realize something. We've been through multiple meetings, lead times for stuff now is I'm getting courted 20 weeks sometimes to get stuff, 20 weeks. We have to get approval, get shop drawings, order it and build them. Every time we keep pushing it off, pushing it off, pushed it off because it wasn't enough members last time. Fine, I understand. That's two more weeks. Then it goes off again. Then it goes off again. You know, we're losing time here. And I would not suggest something that would not work for my business. I grew up in this town. I care what it looks like. Everyone doesn't believe that, but I was born here and I grew up here, graduated. I'm very aware of what fouls is. I would not want to deface it, you know, so that's why I met with Steffi Nicotick. I met with those guys. They were great. I found that Tim Dunn guy is reasonable. Guess what? I will definitely buy the span of glass and put it in there. I want it to look nice. I'm not trying to do something that is bad for the city. It's just, that's not where we're coming from. And I would not do something that's going to hurt my business. I just wanna speak to that. I understand everyone's concerns. It's not some big grand conspiracy here. Just one of my opera windows. They gotta work. The windows there now are terrible. They're not even original. They're like paper thin. So, you know, that's, I just wanna say my piece on that, that that's.
I think before we go too much further, we should probably open it up to public comments for the public hearing. Andy, do you, I see a couple of hands among attendees.
Sure, Chair. First person we have, Joe Morgan. You you've had your hand raised. Are you interested in speaking to this application?
Oh, I'm I'm sorry, Director Port. I didn't realize I had my hand raised. But I would, I will say something that I I believe that there is and not and 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 I'll clarify something, not as a a member of the Historical Commission, but as a as a citizen here of Newburyport, I I and and as an architect, that there is a fundamental difference between what we've been calling windows. And in this case, what is a storefront? And I think that Chair Richards of the Commission has tried to explain that to people, but for some reason the language is not sticking and just the mere fact that the fixed storefront would be removed or and and thus and thus destroying a basic form to this storefront, the overall architecture of the building. And, you know, the the replacement of that with an operable window, which is a different type of architectural feature of the building. I think that that would do an injustice to the intent, the architectural intent of the of the building. And and for that, I believe that many people are objecting to the replacement of the storefront material, regardless of whether it's energy efficient or not. That's really not the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next person we have is John Growits. If you'd like to address the board.
Ah, yes, thank you. And excuse my loud dog drinking water in the background. I actually didn't intend to speak on this matter. I intend to speak on something else, but having listened to it just kind of as a bystander and I've spoken on it before. You know, the original plan that was presented has been modified greatly by the applicant and it's been done so with the insight from the Historical Commission, from the planning board, and you're kind of dealing with something here that hasn't been done. So, you know, if you're asking for photos of a product that has to be specially ordered, you know, that can't be done. And it does seem kind of like stalling. I mean, I think we can all agree that just from an energy standpoint, which I understand isn't under the purview of this board, but what is going to go there? I think 99% of the population can probably agree it's going to be better than what is there, you know, whether it was fouls or, you know, other other restaurants that have been there and now Brian. You set those windows this time of year, it's cold. And putting a system in, you know, with the Mitsubishi splits and a thicker glass, it's going to be an improvement. And as the applicant said, you know, I think we can all agree that probably if a storefront or a restaurant was designed today, it would it would not look the way that Brian or a former files looks from the street right now. I personally, looking at windows like Bar 25 has and also looking at, you know, up the street at Port Tavern, that probably works better for a restaurant. But what the applicant has done is listen to the critique of, you know, all these commissions and boards. And they've tried to, you know, apply that to the current design. So but I understand I'm a realtor, you know, I deal with clients in construction all the time. And it's frustrating to try and really bend over backwards to get something done and feel like it's, you know, not getting accomplished. So I I like, you know, the the current design, the way it is. I have faith in the applicant that it's probably going to work the way he says it will work. And again, if the building department doesn't feel that it will, you know, there it will give commentary on that. But anyways, that's that's my portion of it.
Thank you, John. Next person, Glenn Richards.
Hi, thanks, Andy. Let me first clarify, as you probably realized, so I'm not speaking on behalf of the Historical Commission, of which my member and Chair strictly for myself. So my comments are not from the Commission or do not reflect the Commission. Very happy to hear about the finding of the the structural glass panels and that restoration work to be done. On that topic, I I think the board is is, I agree completely that that's a positive step. And I would even suggest that the as part of that restoration, that the files lettering, that, you know, painted lettering be restored over the embossed or engraved with etched sections. I think, I don't think anyone will have any difficulty finding the store. And I think that 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 foul storefront truly is a new report icon. It's it's, I mean, I've been here for over 40 years and that's always been like an icon in the heart of Newburyport. And I'd hate to see that changed. A couple of other quick things that came up during the discussion. I think the comments by some of the members, Mr. Cooper, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, and and Mr. Tanner, I think are very appropriate as far as the windows. And as far as shop drawings, all you have to do is go to the manufacturer's site, which I did. They have very detailed. There's an installation guide that shows exactly how they are supposed to be installed and how they run. And I don't see any track on the bottom, contrary to what the architect said. And the 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 instructions specify that there is a gap, a physical gap between each section of window. And they specify at least a quarter of an inch gap at the bottom. Gap, air, you know, an air gap. So, you know, and it's right there in black and white. So there shouldn't be, I don't see what the big, you know, what the the thing is there. I think the very simple solution is just replace the inefficient. I agree the windows that are there are inefficient, etc. Just replace them with the same size, you know, thermal up modern windows. It'll look the same. It'll be efficient. It'll be fine. I don't you know, this whole thing, I I don't understand why the imperative to have operable windows. I mean, so many restaurants are seem to be doing just fine without them, especially with all the outdoor seating now. And one last point for attorney mead, you really should know this, but just turn to the ordinance section XXVIF and the procedures and you can read right there the answer to your question about why this this board is looking at this. Section three is in reviewing any application under this section, except where otherwise provided, blah, blah, blah. The SPGA shall adhere to the any relevant position provisions of National Secretary of the Interior Standards for the treatment of historic properties, etc., etc. It's all right there in black and white. Section D is the Secretary of Standards and Related Guidelines shall be applied to all work involving historic properties of all types, materials, construction, sizes and materials, construction, sizes and use located within the DOD. I'm not going to go on, but you get the idea. So that's, that's, you know, pure baloney. I want, I should point out one other thing. This same attorney has argued on another case down Neptune Street that, oh, historic properties, we must make the ceiling height higher because we have to comply with modern codes. And now they're arguing that historic property doesn't have to apply, doesn't have to conform to modern codes. And that's true, except when you're making a renovation or alteration. The alteration needs to comply with up to date codes. Not if you don't, if you don't want to do anything, then you are grandfathered in. So that, you know, argument about the codes, his energy code not applying somehow to a change is, I think, legally bogus. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Next person, Ron Delowski.
Muting. Couple of things that came to me as I listened. One was that is, we have seen the same photographs from the manufacturer of these windows, I think, for, for three meetings now. Is there an installation anywhere in New England or in any northern climate that has winter weather that they can point to and show us that this works? There, there, you know, there, you know, an exterior application of this, this, this can't be that hard. You say that you've scoured the world for these windows. And yet we still see the same photograph every time that is clearly of an interior mall. So that, that's a, that's a question I just hang out there. Where are the five or six photos of exterior applications of these windows in New England or Minnesota that show that they can indeed work in a, in a place that it's cold and it snows and it blows a lot? So that's, that's hanging out there. In terms of timing and Mr. Caswell's frustration with the timing of this, you know, I have to say, just let's deal with it. This is the process. The restaurant, as I understand it, is open. So you're not turning people away. So why, why does this have to happen on some timeframe that you want it to happen on? I would say that the window question on its face, as the gentleman just said, is actually sort of ridiculous. I mean, I don't know why having open windows is such a big deal. I don't know that it adds to the dining experience. Truly in the summer, it's going to be hot. There's going to be exhaust fumes. State Street is busy. There's people walking by. It may not be the end all be all to dining. And besides, it's probably going to, the only people that are going to really get the inside outside experience are people that are in the tables that are in front of the windows. And you already have exterior, an exterior area that was added during COVID, which by the way is really tacky looking. I just have to say that. My final thing, and I, I don't mean to go on, is what? Is there some guarantee? And I, and I don't know the intricacies of the legal thing, but what guarantee do we have? That whatever changes that are made will indeed stay in place. We have a landlord who has not maintained this sign, who has let it degenerate, obviously, clearly, intentionally. How do we not know that whatever change occurs, as soon as, if they are given approval, that that won't again be the problem? Hey, let's just let it degenerate. And in a couple of years, people are going to be annoyed and they're going to say scrape it off. I will thank the gentleman who suggested that we repaint the sign. I think that's a great idea. And put the foul sign on standoffs away from the Brian sign on standoffs in front of the foul sign. I think that serves everybody's purposes. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. Next person, Paul Dennison.
Hi, everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. My name's Paul. I am a manager here at Brian. And I just wanted to speak real fast about the current windows that are in place and why it's necessary to change them. If you're here in the winter, which it is right now, and you're sitting up in the windows, it's very cold. It's cold to sit up there with the two tables that we have up there right now. We have up there with the four bar seats that are up there. We constantly have people that are asking to move out of those spaces. And then just as equally in the summer, in the summertime, when you have those panes that are right there that are inoperable, it is so hot and people are constantly asking to be out of them because it basically acts as a magnifying glass. And people are constantly moving out of that. So that takes away dining space and just the overall experience of the guest being here. And we're very thankful for the outside that we have available to us with our additional seating. But just having that additional feature for us would, I believe, give us a little bit more exposure to the guests, an open area for guests to feel comfortable when they're sitting both inside or outside. And yeah, that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Paul. Any other folks who'd like to address the board this time? Stephanie Nikotic.
Thank you, Director Port and Chair Tantor. I appreciate all of the questioning of the windows that the planning board has had. But my comments are going to be specific to the structural glass replacement and the banner sign. I want to thank the Caswells for including in their application replacement glass for the banner sign and structural glass below the windows. I spent a lot of time also speaking to Tim Dunn. And paint on structural glass is reversible. So if it's, if the, if paint is carefully removed, carefully put on, it can be removed. I, I am concerned about suggestions that an additional sign be put on to the structural glass because I'm afraid it would damage it. So for many people in the community, yes, the Fowles banner sign is important. And at some point, if somebody wants to restore the Fowles painting, that can be done. This applicant doesn't want to do it. And I at least am happy that the sign will be restored with structural glass so that in the future, if someone does want to restore the Fowles painting, it can be done. I don't think putting another sign on top of that sign would, would be good, you know, for the sign. It doesn't need to be done. This is, the paint is reversible on structural glass. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Chair, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could, Nancy Caswell would like to have a few comments as the applicant. I would also respectfully remind the board that, quite frankly, the issue of operable windows is now off the table. We're here to get operable windows approved. We both received a variance and the zoning ordinance was changed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to touch on a couple of the comments by the members of the board as well as the public comments. I think it's important to talk a little bit about the need for the connection to the street. And beyond that, the need for operable windows, which Lisa did just comment, is kind of off the table at this point. But, you know, to say that we aren't affected by the structural presentation of the front of the restaurant is, you know, so ridiculous. The amount of people who walk through the restaurant and ask, you know, for a cigar, ask for magazines. They're, they are few and far between, but they are present. And listen, if I could speak, or, or shall I say, if I could entertain, you know, telling the story of Fowles by selling a cigar to somebody, sure, I'd be fine with that. I'm happy to keep the blade sign. It is an architectural feature. I understand what it represents to the city. I truly respect what it means to our street, to State Street. But when it comes to the design of the windows, I think it's unfair for us to start digging in to what constructionally it will take to put in. It's also from somebody who lived, or shall I say leased the Carmine space for 12 years. I know what the signage did for us. And we had signage on our windows, which clearly isn't something that is really attractive for the Fowles location. What you don't realize is that they're incredibly drafty. What you don't realize is that the current windows in a sunny day are about 93 degrees. What you don't realize is that when I have the heat on, they sweat. And in a time where COVID was really scary for a lot of people, and while you may not believe that COVID is, you know, a thing anymore, it is a thing. For somebody who sits as the executive director for the mass restaurants and listens to the horror stories of what's happening, not only in our state, but around the country with restaurants, we are affected by what's happened with Corona. And you don't understand what it's like to operate a restaurant. And you don't have the ability to understand what it means to have a functioning window that makes sense and the amount of people that do want to look at State Street and sit by the window. So I'm just slightly frustrated at the fact that we're still talking about the need or how they should look or questioning our interest with these. It's, it's just infuriating. I want to remind you that I'm a small business operator. I have spent a year, that is my frustration, investing in not only architects to redesign, you know, our attorney to come back and speak, extending, finding time to do it. And I haven't given up because I believe it's important for my business that I operate. If you come to my restaurants, I am there day in, day out. I represent, I like to think I represent the city to the best that I possibly can. And it's infuriating to me that you would think, any member would think that I would do something that would upset anyone. I am in the business of hospitality. I don't want to argue with people. I'm supposed to be hosting you. I'm supposed to be welcoming you into my restaurant. That's what I'm trying to do. Give you a safe place, a comfortable place. I want to connect with the streets, to sit here in demands or desire to have the same storefront replicated when it's sat empty for as long as I've been here. It's just, why, why do you want the lights off and it to not succeed? It can't just be a museum. I, I'm just, I don't understand the logic behind it. I came to this town to run restaurants. I did 10th Center Street before all the back and forth on it. I remodeled it. I sat with Toby, did Molly's pub. I think I did it due justice. I went to Scandia. I operated a restaurant there. I maintained it. I cleaned, I think I put it back on the map. I moved across the street. We did Steak and Stein. It's just, there's no issue with how it looks, how it represents our community. And here we are. Here we are, doing Fowles, another building that means a lot to many people, which I understand. And I have never done anything that's upset anybody in any of our redesigns. So I just, I'm sorry if, you know, I'm, I'm taking it to more personal level, but it's hard to not be taking it personally when we're writing these checks out and restaurant margins aren't what you think they are apparently. And you can't just keep putting it off and putting it off. We spent, when we were asked, when the Daily News called me, why is it taking you so long? Because we couldn't find something that we thought fit what you wanted. And now we're asked, bring back more, do more, come back again. There's no rush. I mean, what is the rush, like when we're closed? Oh, well, they didn't succeed, but we don't care. I just, I, I can't stress enough, and again, apologize if I'm taking it too personally. I just don't understand why, why we don't see the commitment and the challenges. Not everybody can sit on these calls and speak for us or against us. You know, it's, it's just mind blowing.
Chair, I just note, we do have one hand raised from a caller, number ending in 407. And caller, you'll need to unmute on your end. I think you'll need to press star six. Yeah.
Hello, am I coming in loud and clear?
You are, thank you.
Oh, good. My name is Reg Bacon. And can I introduce some columnists to the discussion? I'm at 21 Strong Street in Newburyport. I will say I'm very encouraged that the applicant is willing to truly restore the architectural glass sign at the former Fowles. And as far as the windows are concerned, you know, they can be reversed by the next tenant, which I'm not a gambler, but I would suspect that that will happen within my lifetime. And I'm old, so I'm sticking my neck out there. But I have three comments to add. Number one, it's important to acknowledge that the initiative for this sign restoration, that is the research and the facilitation of the contact with the structural glass expert and assistance for the material, they were done by members of the interested public and not the applicant, who for a year didn't really lift a finger in that direction. I'm pleased that the applicant has embraced the recommendations and committed to the sign restoration. My second point encourages adding, encourages the board to add very specific written conditions if this is to be approved. Despite our planning, zoning and building laws in Newburyport, we have all seen too frequently on other projects, the hail will slip while nobody was looking. So I hope we don't need to have 24 hour centuries while this sign is being restored. But I'll toss out that idea anyway. My third point, speaking of 24 hour centuries, the public and the board should be reminded that the applicant still has an active challenge to our city's unanimously enacted pro-preservation zoning laws. That what I, is what I see as a bold faced bullying of the public interest. So I would ask the board to factor this in when considering any conditions of approval. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Chair, we do have another hand raised. I believe it's a prior speaker. I'll defer to you. Ron Delowski.
Thank you. Just a quick follow up. If the problem is that the window, as it currently stands, is too cold, too hot, then the split systems that have been talked about being added would obviate that immediately. So you don't need to change the window if you're going to install a Mitsubishi split system that can do air and heat. So I, that, that's adding that would, would immediately make those seats along the wall, along the window wall much more comfortable. So that, that, that really is, it makes the idea that like, oh, we have to do these windows and we're going to put these split systems up here because of the windows. Well, you could just do that now and solve the whole problem. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. I see no other hands raised at this time. To her to you.
Okay, so let's bring it back to the planning board then. And any further discussion by members at this time?
One question.
Go ahead, Alden.
Yeah. Just, just could I ask for a little more clarification on? Yeah. Just, just could I ask for a little more clarification on how the windows would operate? You mentioned the track up above and below, and I believe they said that that would be outside of where the glass is today, such that the glass surface is roughly the same as it is today. Is that, is that true? And just want to make, make sure I understood that correctly.
Julia, could you address those questions? Maybe you can go back to that drawing, Caitlin or Andy, just so Julia can explain the stacking and the construction.
I'm sorry, what was the question about the stacking?
Julia, Alden's question was, could you explain how they operate? And then give him the details about the change in the opening as a result of the change.
Yeah, so effectively, if the track is recessed behind the solid surface.
Yep. So as we have on, if you go up to the top of that drawing, for some reason mine is frozen. I can't quite read these.
Julia.
So the glass height will now be four foot one on the left side, where it was four foot seven before. And on the right side, the glass height will be three foot five and a half, where it was three foot eleven and a half. And to have operating windows, you know, we have to have some styles and rails. So it's a six-inch change in total.
Okay, so effective, the track is there, but there's still like the area of aluminum border and so forth. That's, that's, that will be seen. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Just a couple of follow-up comments, just, just to address some of the previous comments, particularly from the applicant. I actually have no argument with, with the concept of operable windows and have no argument with, with your decision to, to make that a feature in your restaurant. I just think the solution that is being proposed is completely inappropriate. And I believe the way it's been presented is inconsistent. I believe we were told at the last presentation that, that the rails, the aluminum portion of this window would not be four inches high. It might be two inches high, that that was possible with the manufacturer. And yet it looks like the drawings are still indicating four inches. When we raised the question of, of open joints on the windows at the last meeting, we were told that there would be storm windows. It's not a big deal. We're going to have storm windows. You won't see them. It's okay. Now there are no storm windows. So I mean, there's not a lot of confidence that we can have in this solution if, if it's a kind of moving target of information. And you haven't been able to show us an example of this. To Bonnie's point, you have not been able to show us an example of what you're talking about in a built condition so that we have some level of comfort that it's actually been done before. What we know about the system is it's an interior system. What we know about the system is it has a lot of open joints and a lot of potential for air infiltration, which isn't going to help that interior environment very much. So in, in principle, I'm, I'm behind this 100% in terms of creating operable windows in the storefront. I just don't think you have the right solution. And it's why I suggested Ipswich Bay Glass or Salem Glass. I don't know if they have an answer to this or not. I'm just saying they are companies that specialize in custom installations like this. They may be able to help. But I, I think you've got to look to a solution that is more of a conventional storefront that, that is weather tight and is appropriate for a New England environment. This just doesn't seem to make any sense.
Before I, before I call on Beth, I just would like to clarification, maybe from Julia. Bob asked the question about the four-inch top and bottom rails. And I think he suggested, in looking at some of the other dimensions, that there was a six-inch difference. So is, can you explain what the difference is there, if there is a difference?
Yes, when we spoke to the manufacturer, they could only do four-inch rails. So we couldn't get that down to two inches. But we are, since we are, like we said before, tucking it up into the header, that we are making the glass height larger by doing that. The whole style.
So basically, what you're saying is it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So what you're saying is an inch of that, four inches is hidden.
An inch on either side.
Thank you. Beth?
So I do think, I agree with Bob that the concern is whether this is the appropriate solution. I know that the ZBA-approved operable windows, I don't think that's the question. I think it's whether this is the appropriate solution. And I do think it would be extremely helpful if you could get from the manufacturer just examples of where, in similar circumstances, this has been used and been a successful solution. That would set my mind at ease. So if you could go back and see if they have some information about some similar applications, that would be extremely helpful for me. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak from the board at this time? Either questions or discussion about the proposal? Heather?
I just wondered if maybe they could source or speak to, because I know that Nancy is so well-connected with the restaurant community in Boston and more local, if maybe they could find sources that would be appealing to everybody, like they're used on Newbury Street, for example, because there are operable windows there, and maybe, you know, look into those products. Because those are an exterior product.
Can I speak to that? So Heather, I, I mean, I, the difference between Newbury Street and what's happening at Fowles is the impassement situation. So what we don't want is what Newbury for, what Newbury Street offers, and that's ceiling-to-ground openings like what we see at the Port Tavern. So we're trying to fit within the, you know, current window structure, maintain the black glass, and keep the same look to respect the architecture that's there. That's the difference. And trust me, like even when you talk about Ipswich Bay Glass, like Brian Patrickin, you know, we have lead time issues. And so that's, that's a big issue. I mean, I've seen these windows in museum storefronts. I've seen them before. I mean, I didn't stand in front of them and take a picture. I mean, how did you think we came up with the idea for that? Like, you know, I, I think that's the frustrating part here is, you know, they have, you know, maybe you want, I understand you want to see the, you know, blueprints or, you know, specs on them. But the difference is what we're trying to work with to maintain and, and, you know, a balance between the desires of the board, respect the interest of the look upfront, but we can't do just things on Newbury Street because it's floor-to-ceiling. And if we go back to, you know, the first, first round a year ago, when we brought new draw, when we brought those windows to, nobody liked them because of all the framework on them and they were too busy. So we have looked at different options. We picked these because they were the most appropriate, looked the best, wouldn't make a huge difference, didn't change the view from, you know, on eye. And we thought we were doing the right thing. I believe in the product. I'm not going to put a product in the window that simply, like that would create an issue for me. Of course, I want to do that. This isn't a huge investment. And as Julie has mentioned in the past, we can't just get certain things because they're special orders. I think that's why we go back to the building permit being, you know, evaluating it. I'm sorry if I'm misspeaking without proper guidance, but that, I mean, that's the, that's the construction process. I hope that answers your question, Heather.
Actually, my, respectfully, my only point was more to say that maybe the board and the community, if you said something like, well, this restaurant uses the same name brand, it may not be the same height, we're using a shorter version. I'm just saying that perhaps anecdotally, you could say that they've had great success. They don't have energy issues, that that might make people feel better knowing that a very specific product has been used elsewhere. Well, I just was trying to suggest a way to get you through the process more smoothly and, and, you know, encouraging more positive feedback.
Is there anybody else on the board who would like to add anything to this?
Rick, this is Bonnie. May I speak?
Yes, please.
I, I think we've made it quite clear, several of us on the board, about what we'd like to see in order to feel comfortable voting on this application. And I don't have any problem with continuing to the next meeting if they are willing to bring us the information and the visuals that we've requested. If they don't want to do that, then we might be forced into a vote we don't want to take tonight. That's all I have to say.
And, and well, just to follow up, the, the information that we would want to see, one thing I've, I've heard is just some examples of how this product is used in an exterior application in a cold climate. Is there something further than that? And I know there was some discussion about, about detailing and so forth.
This is Don. I'm happy to start off this, and Bob or others could perhaps offer more details. What I'm looking for is that I'll just take, you know, there's, there's a sill, there's a jam, there's header, two jams and header. I guess what I would be looking for is, you know, what the sill looks like right now with the existing window. And you're going to move the window to the left or the right, it's going to be four inches high, whatever it is. And that's, that's a typical cross-section of, of the sill. And, you know, similar if you'd see just a regular window. So that's what I'm looking for. Just to be specific, is what I would not want to do is have this applicant come back and do something, and then at least be say, gee, that wasn't what I'm looking for. So I'd like to be as specific as possible. The applicant may agree or disagree with what I want, but that's what I'm looking for. And furthermore, would also show, again, the jam, whether, if the window's going up above the window, I mean, of the existing header, is there a separation? Basically, those type of details that don't need shop drawings, but based upon all the great work they've done, they should be able to provide that. So that's what I'm looking for.
And Don, I think all of that is possible with the, the standard details that are available on this company's website. Those could be incorporated into, you know, architectural wall sections or section details at the head and the sill and the jams. I think you'd see a lot of what you wanted to see.
Other, so I do think that the, looking for just an example, example, or more than one example of an exterior implication is what several people have said.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I think we're clear on the drawings. I want to be clear because I hear the board continuing to ask for this. And we're, I feel as though we're speaking over one another. These are, these are windows that are also specially made for this application. So to find, we cannot, I can't stand here and say that we are going to be able to find photographs of these windows in a similar application, because in fact, they are being specially made or revised for this application. We can provide the cross-sections as, as requested. The architect will draw them, and we can provide those back to you. But if, if the board's decision is going to be based on seeing photographs of similar windows in similar applications, I can't guarantee that I can provide that. And I'd like to know that now, if that is going to be, you know, a do or die.
So, so I think you, I don't, I don't think you need to be as specific as that. I think it's, you know, we're not looking for, at least from my understanding of what the board members have said, we're not looking for, you know, a four-and-a-half-foot tall window in a historic building. I think the concern is, is, has this ever been used in an exterior application in a cold climate? You know, that's, that's the basic question that everybody's been asking, or that several people have been asking. So I don't want you to feel like we're asking for, or that board members are asking for something that's very similar to the proposal that you have in front of us right now. It's simply, have, has this type of, has this product been used in an exterior application in a cold climate? That's basically the, the simple question. Now, if you, if you're saying that that hasn't been done, or you can't find an example of it, I think that kind of gets to the point that people are saying, you know, is this, is this a trustworthy product for this, for the proposed use? So I think that's what the, what board members have, have been questioning to, at this point. I don't think, I don't think it's saying, you know, show us an example of a window that has been placed into a historic structure. I don't think that's what it is at all.
Well, that, I think that's interesting because of course, that's your jurisdiction. But nonetheless, we'd like to ask for continuance. And we will attempt to provide that additional information to you. And we'd like an ask for continuance to March 16th, please.
Thank you. Before we take action on that, I just want to make sure that we've covered the bases that you don't, you're not surprised at a future meeting. So if, from the board members who have spoken, and anybody else, are those the two requests that we have of the applicant? One, to try to find an exterior application, or failing that perhaps, something from the manufacturer that, that says that this, the proposed application is appropriate. And second, the types of typical cross-sections that Don and Bob have talked about. Is there anything further that we need to know before we move forward on this?
Rick, this is Don, and if I may say something that's, that I'm thinking of doing independently and then sharing with others because it's been raised, and I personally need to do a bit more research on my own to understand this. And unless I misunderstood what some of the folks said, it's the following, that I think there was one school of thought that said, well, it's a historic structure, so we do not have to follow energy efficiency standards. And I thought I heard another school, well, whenever you do a renovation, at least a renovation, that part of it has to meet energy efficiency standards. I'm not saying who's right or wrong. I'm just saying right now, until I personally read it, or someone else provides me specific documentation, I'll do all that with the DOD, et cetera. I just wanted the applicant to know, I'll take that on my own because in my mind, there seems to be a difference of opinion. And at this point, I don't have a resolution personally. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Rick, this is Bonnie. On the brine sign, I don't know if we've, I know we have agreement from the applicant that they're willing to put it on a separate panel and hang it. I, I believe it would be useful for us to have some idea of what that's going to look like, the piece. what that's going to look like. Um, the piece that it's going to be painted on and how it's going to be attached. Uh, if in fact, uh, well, no, it's not an if. I think I heard, I know I heard from the applicant that they were willing to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, if I could just pick up on um, what Chairman Sontag said. So first, I do want to back up, Don, the um, architect will provide you the um, section from the state building code relative to historic structures. Um, and second, um, so we haven't thought about this yet, and so we have to submit to this board in a week. Um, matters for the next meeting. And so we agreed to do it subject to approval by the um, uh, staff. Um, so we're happy to do that. I don't know that we can get that done in the next week. Um, since we're going to be focusing on these other things. So that, that's the first thing. And I do also want to clarify that the applicant is not proposing to repaint fowls underneath the brine sign. Um, so there was some discussion of that, so we would like clarity on that point as well.
Okay, since I brought it up, may I respond? Um, Rick?
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely. No, no need to paint the foul sign underneath. Um, I from, I, it would be fine if we um, with me, if we wrote a condition into the decision that the sign would be um, subject to the planning director's um, consideration. And if he has any concern at all about it, that he would bring it back to us, but basically it would be um, approved um, by him. If the other board members would be willing to go along with that and expedite this application so that hopefully we could uh, take a vote at the next meeting.
It sounds good to me.
Fine with me.
Hey, so um, unless there's anything else, uh, the applicant has requested a continuance to the March sixteenth meeting. Um, do I have a motion on that?
Uh, Rick, this is Don. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, I will uh, call the role. Alden.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
And Rick, yes. Okay, so that's continued to the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next hearing is on the application of the Institution for Savings for another DOD special permit at seventy-nine State Street. Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Uh, for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Talerman Costa, thirty Green Street. On behalf of the Institution for Savings, um, with me this evening, um, is Kim Rock, the Chief Operating Officer, Mike Jones. The Chief Executive Officer and Chip Nutter, the architect on this project. So you can go to the first slide, please. Um, so the building at seventy-nine State Street um, was constructed in around eighteen forty-five. Um, the property is currently used as a professional offices. Uh, the use is allowed by right. Uh, the property is located in the B two in downtown overlay district. Um, the original building, as I said, was constructed in around eighteen forty-five, and there were several additions thereafter constructed. Uh, the building is fully compliant with all dimensional requirements. The applicant proposes to make no changes to the footprint or the use of the structure. So, um, since you haven't heard this before, um, the, as I said, um, it's called the Dole Blumpy House in the Form B. Um, it is listed as contributory to the um, district and the district data sheets and described as a Greek revival slash colonial revival. Uh, which has been altered. Um, sometime between nineteen hundred and nineteen oh six, and I'm going to show you this in a minute. A large, single-story bay addition was added to the south side of the structure. Uh, similarly, a two-story L was added to the south side of the house extending to the east between nineteen hundred and nineteen oh six. Uh, in nineteen eighty-five, a flat roof modern addition uh, was added to the Temple Street side in the rear of the structure. And in nineteen seventy-seven, a shed dormer was added, all according to the Form B. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So walk through a little bit of history. So this is the eighteen eighty-eight map. Um, and here we have State Street and you can see the yellow dot right in the middle. And you have that uh, block and that is the um, the house as it existed um, shortly after it was initially built. Next slide, please. Uh, so here we have the eighteen ninety-four Sanborn map, still no additions added to the structure. Uh, you'll note the house is pretty distinctive because it has what we call the round room on the right-hand corner as you face it on State Street. As you can see, that has not been yet added to the structure. Next slide, please. Then, uh, in nineteen hundred, we have a small addition added to the back along Temple Street. Next slide, please. And in nineteen oh six is when uh, probably the first major renovation happened to the house. You can see the round room added to the front corner. And then the L added on the back. Next slide, please. Again, here's nineteen fourteen, the structure still exists as it did in nineteen um, oh six. Next slide, please. And here's the nineteen twenty-four map. Um, and there's a little front porch added next to the round room, as you can see in uh, this um, map as well. Next slide, please. So here's the, a Form B, um, and you can see the, the uh, structure from State Street looking to the east. Um, and the next slide is actually a little better for what we're going to talk about, which is the windows. So next slide, please. So this is a better shot of it in the opposite direction, uh, looking south, but you can see the windows are two over one. So sometime uh, in the early nineteen hundreds, although we're not really sure what, when um, the windows were changed to six over six. So the windows that exist in the house today, except for a couple that we're going to talk about and that we're actually going to restore, they've all been replacement windows. Um, so the windows today are six over six and they were originally uh, two over one. Uh, next slide, please. So we're going to go through, through some photographs. Uh, the house is also covered in vinyl, including this top gable end and um, all of the trim around it. Um, so that's uh, we'll show that in a little bit. But so here's a face-on view of the building. Next slide, please. Uh, here's a side view, so you can see the nineteen eighties addition um, in the rear. Um, but you can see the front uh, original structure and you can see the round room on the right-hand corner. That room has original windows. Uh, those windows are actually curved like the room. Uh, I will show you in a moment. Those windows will all be restored uh, and made um, a- along with the mechanical ropes and pulleys inside. They've already been uh, reviewed by the, the window women. Next slide, please. Here's this Temple Street elevation, uh, and you can see the, uh, the addition uh, from the eighties. Uh, we are proposing to replace those windows at the top to make them uh, more appropriate for the rest of the house and more uh, appropriately scaled. Next slide, please. Uh, here's coming down uh, Temple Street, so you can see the rear of the building. You can see that later added uh, L on the left-hand side. Next slide, please. And here's traveling south on State Street. Next slide. And going uh, north on State Street. Next slide, please. Uh, and so here's the front kind of portico. Um, all of the wood trim that exists um, on this uh, facade and everywhere else on the original building uh, will be scraped and painted. If it has to be repaired, it will be repaired in kind. Next slide, please. And you can see the, the round room um, as it's referred to. Um, and those windows will show on the plans shortly, um, are proposed to be uh, restored and repaired. And similarly, the uh, side lights and transom over the front door um, also proposed to be uh, restored and repaired. Next slide, please. In this uh, shot, you can see actually how um, all of the rakes and everything have been covered with vinyl. Um, and as I will go over in a moment, uh, that vinyl is all proposed to be removed. Um, and the rakes either repaired in kind or replaced as necessary in kind. Um, we're not really sure what the condition of those are. Next slide, please. Um, and here's just a side view. These uh, also just to point out while we're looking at it, these are all vinyl uh, shutters. The proposal is to replace them with wood shutters that are actually operable wood shutters. Next slide, please. And here's a front view, and so you can see better the, the transom and side lights. The uh, bay window on the left um, was later added at some point in time. It's certainly not original, as you could um, see back on the Form B, as we'll show you in the drawings momentarily. Um, that is proposed to be removed and two uh, two over one windows uh, put in its stead to be uh, to take it back to its original um, construction. Next slide, please. And again, um, just an example of some detail, uh, the wood on those um, on the corner boards uh, will be um, scraped and painted and repaired as required. Next slide, please. You want to blow it up just a little bit. Um, so we don't really need to focus so much in the site plan because nothing's happening to the site or the footprint of the building. Um, but um, there's the site plan. You can see the uh, the round room at the front. Um, but there won't be any changes to the site plan, except for that fence that borders the outside edges, which was later added, uh, will be removed. Next slide, please. So, um, just to go over uh, the details, uh, specifically, um, the applicant proposes to replace a number of the windows with historically appropriate windows, as I've said, and we'll go over in a minute. And to replace the more modern windows and the newer addition with windows that are consistent with historic proportion of the, of the structure and will require larger openings. The existing six over six windows um, will be replaced with two over one windows, similar to what the original windows were. The windows will be aluminum clad with uh, wood on the inside of the, a building. Uh, they will have the appropriate spacer bars and they will have three D muttons, and we have a, a cut sheet to show that momentarily. Uh, the applicants do propose to create a couple of new window openings, uh, which we will show um, on the um, additions on the rear and the sides. And we'll show you that in a moment. Uh, the windows, as I noted, in the round room around the front door will be restored. Uh, and around the front door will be restored as a result of the changes of the window openings, um, which we'll show in a minute. There's two point eight percent demolition by a combination of infill and demolition. Uh, further, the applicant will be replacing the trim around the newly installed windows with wood trim of the same profile. Uh, since our original filing, we're also propos- proposing the following changes on the nineteen eighties addition and the upper deck on the south elevation. You can go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. The nineteen eighties edition Temple Street side porch, we're going to replace the nineteen eighties columns with columns to coordinate with that on the front porch of the original structure. The nineteen eighties edition Temple Street side, also, we're going to replace the diagonal lattice along the bottom with vertical lattice around the bottom of the porch. In the nineteen eighties Temple Street side, also, we're going to replace the entry doors with new six-panel doors without glass. The south side later added deck on the third floor, uh, replace the existing solid railing with wood railing and balusters. On the southeast and west sides of the deck addition, they'll have new vertical lattice instead of the diagonal lattice. Uh, further, they're going to replace the, proposing to replace the later added doors on the first floor in the east and south elevations, as well as the third floor um, deck leading to the south elevation, which show you those in the drawings. And replace the nineteen hundreds front stair railings to match in kind. Additionally, the fence around the front of the property is proposed to be removed, um, as the fence was more recently added. Um, certainly the fence that appeared in that Form B hasn't uh, existed for a long period of time. Uh, the Historic Commission has issued um, the Board a report. I do want to uh, make mention of one thing. There were some comments uh, in the Historic Commission report about uh, the mechanicals. So the um, the windows, the replacement windows that we're going to replace also, um, those are um, friction fit. Um, they have aluminum liners with springs, so they operate like new windows. Um, we will be replacing um, or repairing uh, the rope and pulley systems in the round window, round room windows. So those uh, mechanicals will be uh, restored and or replaced if necessary. Uh, the window women have examined those, as I said earlier. Next slide, please. Um, so this is a, a report of the condition of the windows as is requested. Um, we can go to the next slide because there's actually a better, um, there you go. So in this slide, you'll see the existing conditions also. Um, but we note in the highlights, the windows that are going to be uh, restored and repaired. So there is this, a bank of windows on the rear elevation that you can see from Temple Street um, that will be restored and repaired in addition to the round room windows and the side lights and transom. Next slide, please. So yeah, if you could blow that up, we can look at each elevation. So on the, on the uh, north elevation, you'll see here where the windows at the top of that nineteen eighties addition have been made a little bit larger, so they have a similar form and they are two over ones. Again, you can see the six-panel door that is being replaced. You can see the columns that are currently just square nineteen eighties columns uh, being replaced with something that complements the uh, columns in the original part of the house. You can see the lattice work in the bottom that goes to vertical. Um, and I noted the window replacements. Um, so next slide. So here's the south elevation. Um, this is the side against the lending office. Again, here you see the restoration of the round room windows, the replacement of the uh, two over one windows. Um, and then the new windows um, at the top on the um, shed dormer. Um, you can see those windows are noted up there. Those are new. Uh, you can see the six-panel door that's being changed. You can see on the third floor um, deck, a uh, change to the railings and baluster system instead of the solid uh, railings. Uh, and along the bottom, you can see uh, the vertical, um, excuse me, the horizontal uh, going to a vertical lattice work. Uh, could you go down to the elevation below? So here's the rear. Again, you see the new two over ones, windows. Uh, the restoration, of course, of that bank of windows, replacement of the windows two over one in the basement level. Um, and same way at the um, gable end of the original building on the top. And some of the other details I've already pointed out. And here's the front of the building. So again, we have the uh, replacement of the windows for two over one. Uh, the repair and restoration of the side lights and transom, as well as the round room windows. And I think I have pointed out every other, oh, and then the two new windows where the current bay window exists on the left-hand side of this elevation. And that's consistent with the um, original form of the building. Next slide, please. So in accordance with um, the DOD special permit criteria, the applicant also needs to meet the general um, ten H seven criteria. Uh, the first is, is the use listed in the Table of Use Regulations. And here, of course, professional offices is allowed by right in the B two, B two district, so it is. Uh, the second is the use essential or desirable to public convenience and welfare. Here, the professional, use of professional offices is the existing and proposed use. It's allowed by right in the district and is therefore been determined by the city previously to be desirable in the downtown business district. Three is, will the requested use uh, not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety? Again, the professional office use is not changing. There's no added square footage to be constructed. Um, as a result, there's nothing new being created that would add and, any new traffic or negatively impact this criteria. Uh, the next is, well, whether or not the The next is, well, whether or not the use will overload any essentially public services, public water, drainage or sewer. And here again, the use is not changing. The square footage of the building is not changing. So there won't be any impact on those services. The next is whether or not the there are any special regulations for the use. Here, there are no special regulations for this use. The next is whether the use will impair the integrity or character of the district. Again, the use is allowed by right. As a result, there's nothing being created by the renovations to this building that would negatively impact the criteria. And number seven is the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that use. Again, the use isn't changing. Downtown district allows it by right. And therefore, the renovations will not negatively impact this criteria. Eight is the proposed uses in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Again, it's allowed by right. It fits within the downtown district. And it continues to be the same use that existed previously. And nine is that the use will not be conducted in manner so as to be nauseous or omit dangerous or injurious or other matters into the environment. And here, the use of professional offices will not be conducted in a manner that is injurious or otherwise dangerous to the area. Next is the DOD criteria. And again, I would refer the the board to the Historic Commission report. But we believe that we satisfy the criteria of the DOD. First is that the new construction and alteration shall not disrupt the essential form integrity of the subject historic building structure or exterior architectural features where the lot is located or its setting of the DOD. We believe that we have shown you that, in fact, we are restoring the building back to what it was more historically appropriate. And taking off some additions that were not not additions, but features that were not historically appropriate. And then moreover, the new construction and alteration with the DOD shall be compatible with the size, scale, height, color, material, and character of the building itself. The structure or architectural features, the lot where it is located or the setting within the DOD is the case may be. Again, we are restoring those architectural features that are originals to the building. And then we are restoring or replacing the the light patterns in the windows that were original to the building. We're trying to bring the 1980s structure more consistent with the original building and removing some of the more offensive features like the angled lattice work on the building. And we are removing the vinyl siding and restoring and the wood clavards and or replacing the wood clavards to a similar reveal that exists today. We haven't seen it, but we believe the reveal is going to be between three and a quarter and four inches. And so we will replace those wood clavards underneath there with the same reveal. And the all of the rakes and trim that have been covered up by the vinyl will also be reexposed and either restored or replaced in kind depending on the condition. Finally, we're going to be removing those plastic shutters and replacing those with new appropriately sized wood shutters. For that, for those reasons, we believe that the board can find that the applicant meets the requirements of the DOD special permit criteria. And we would request the board approve the application.
Thank you. Well, are there any questions for the applicants?
Yes, this is Bonnie. Not question so much as a comment that I think this is very, very well proposed. I like everything that you're doing, especially getting back to some of the details of the Greek Revival style. And in the windows, the two over one. Or yeah, two over one. So I just want reassurance on two points that I'm pretty sure I saw, but I just want to make sure. The round window, you are going to replace the divided light pattern with a, what is it, a two over one or a one over one? Is that correct?
No, the the round windows stay the same. They're being restored. They're being restored. If you go to the proposed drawings, we're not changing the round windows because those are original to that.
May I say something?
Yeah, they're multiple. They look like there are multiple divided window lights. And I was just concerned that that wasn't appropriate. But if they're the original that was put in in 1900 or so, then of course you want to keep them.
All right. So I I want to just hang on one second. I'm not sure who said. May I say something?
That's this is Chip Nutter from Woodman Associates. The windows in the round room were originally one over one. Those mountains that that you see are actually glued on probably when they did the the six over six in the 60s or 70s. So we're planning to restore them back to what what they were like around 1906 or something. They're one over one.
That's what I thought I saw. So they're wide open. Oh, great.
Thank you, Chip.
Chip, that's great. That's that's what I wanted. Okay. And the second question I had was just to be sure, I know we have the right to approve well, composite materials or more modern materials. But we want the everything around the windows and the sashes and so on not to be reflecting light as if they look vinyl, even if they aren't. I just want to make sure that anything that's aluminum or not 100% wood is either going to be hidden if it's aluminum or will look like wood, at least from a distance.
So you're talking about the specific window itself, right?
Yes, the frame, yeah, all the pieces of it.
So I believe they're going to be painted. So that's going to be okay. But Chip, I will let you answer that because that's a construction question I can't answer. But I believe all that's going to be painted. So you you're not going to see the, you know, so to speak aluminum clad, if you will. Is that right?
Yes, the aluminum clad windows come prefinished from the factory with a a paint finish. So it they should appear just like painted wood. The exterior of the windows.
Okay, and it's not any kind of glossy paint that's gonna, you know, make me cringe because I think it looks like vinyl.
No, it's not going to look like vinyl. In fact, there is a photograph of a sample of one of the windows later on. Slide 34.
There we go.
Yeah. Yeah, kind of a muted look.
Right.
Well, all I can say is I think this is great. I think it's going to be a great enhancement to the street and to the building itself. I just wish, and you guys probably do too, that the back extension didn't even exist. But it does exist. So we'll accept it as as is. And I'm glad you're making some improvements with the windows and that bit on the bottom and so on. So thank you very much.
Do other board members have any questions or comments at this point before I ask for a public comment? I don't see anybody. So Andy, do we have anybody in the public who wishes to be heard in this?
So folks, do you just have to use those tools to raise your hand if you'd like to speak? Not seeing any takers, Chair.
Okay, great. So in that case, if we are satisfied with questions and so forth, I would accept a motion.
Rick, this is Don. A question. I'm happy to make the motion. Did you also want to go very quickly or just be sure we have no comments on the findings or anything or or other? Because it's I'm not saying we, you know, we actually want to handle that.
Yeah, I that's a very good point. I actually did have some comments on the findings. And I don't know, Andy, with you have my the comments that I sent you that we could show on the screen.
Yeah, sure. Bear with me.
Thank you, Don, for catching me.
Rick, just a quick question. Do we need to close the public hearing?
Do we normally vote to close it?
No, the chair just determined it's closed.
Okay. Power. Okay, thank you. So I had I had gone through the the draft findings and and so forth. And so I made some suggestions, and it's a good time to to go through it and see if anybody else had any comments on them. In this first one, under the the DOD special permit findings, there's no new construction. So I just changed it from to use the same wording as in the previous bullet, proposed alteration rather than new construction and alteration. Did anybody have any other comments about the DOD special permit findings? If not, we can go down to the general special permit findings. I crossed out a sentence here because I thought it was somewhat repetitive. So just to simplify. And I kind of just made changes to grammar and so forth, just to have some some consistency. So the second one, I changed it from would be to is and changed it from public convenience to public welfare. In the third one, I think it's just just clear to say the requested use will have no impact on existing vehicular pedestrian volumes and facilities. Any comments on these three? If not, next page, please. Again, it will not, rather than saying will not overload, I think we should say that it will have no impact on public water because we're not changing the use. And in number six, say, instead of saying we found that, because this is all findings, you say the proposed project will not impair the integrity and the project complies with, just to be more firm about that. In number seven, I said the requested use exterior renovations to an historic structure will be supportive of should be of of the historic character of the downtown business district. And any comments on on any of these findings? If not, we can scroll down a bit. The proposed use will not admit any form of environmental pollution. I think it's just simpler to say that. So that was all I had. If folks are okay with that, then we could move on to a a motion with that, those changes to the findings. And there are no special conditions, correct?
The office has not suggested any to the board for consideration, but we defer to you if you have any yourselves.
Okay. So back to the question, do I have a motion to to approve this permit?
Rick, it's Don. I'm happy to make it approved as as amended.
Thank you, Don.
Or as provided with the comments. Right, Burbage.
And is there a second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay. So we'll move on to a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. So that is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. It is now 10 o'clock. And we our next order of business is discussion of the proposed short term rental unit ordinance. So my thought and having discussed this with Bonnie is that it's going to take us probably two meetings to get through this. One meeting to discuss and hopefully come to some conclusions. And then Bonnie and I probably working together would draft a proposed report to the city council, which would then be approved, modified, whatever, at the second at a second meeting. And at that point, we could determine whether there might need to be a majority and a minority report because it sounds like we we may not get to a complete consensus on this. My thought is that the report would be very focused. And particularly would focus on a limited number of issues, those issues being what types, whether owner occupancy is is fundamentally a requirement, which has been the assumption since the beginning of this process. Whether all three types of short term rental units would be treated the same way and treated the same way across all zoning districts as they are right now, or whether there's some difference in the way we treat them. And how we deal with with parking. And that those seem to be the major issues. Other board members may have other issues that they would like to address. So I guess my question is, at this time of the evening, if does the board want to begin that discussion? And see if we can make progress on it in the next half hour. And to the point where we would be able to have a draft report that then could be deliberated on and voted on at the March 16th meeting. Or do you feel like there's enough that we need to talk about at this point? That we need to spend more time on it than a half hour? And I guess I'd open that up to the board to see what your preferences are at this point, because I certainly don't want to have the meeting run to 11 at this point. We've got other things to think about. Any thoughts on this?
Rick, it's Don. I'll throw something out. Unless we're going to have a fairly busy agenda, the next meeting, my sense is we should not. I mean, I know we've got, we continued one, but I'd like to think it will not take as long as this past meeting. My suggestion would be is to hold it off for the the next meeting. My concern is we'll we'll talk a bit, and then we may lose some momentum of what we're going to do in in getting to consensus. But I surely am happy to do something tonight, too, if that's what the rest of the members want. But this is my two cents.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, if I can speak, I I think it would be best not to rush through and to actually put the right time in in the next meeting.
Andy, what do we have on the agenda for the next meeting?
You actually have a light agenda. At this time, you actually have a request for minor modification, and you have the executive session with KP Law regarding the Institution for Savings Litigation.
And we also have 17 to 21 State Street.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, would you just continue?
Andy, this is Bonnie. Could I ask for clarification? Is the executive session before 7 o'clock?
Yeah, actually, it might be good to just confirm everybody's on the same page here. So we had talked about the possibility of having that at 6:15 PM. I guess we defer to the board. It may be good to just clarify that everybody's on the same page about start time for that. Obviously, we'd want to post for early start time if that's the case. Sometimes the executive session is done at the beginning. Sometimes it's done at the end. Before you know how you want to handle that.
Well, I I'm more thinking about the convenience or inconvenience of starting at 6:15. And I'd like to hear from other board members if starting at 6:15 would be a problem for you.
It's fine with me to start at 6:15.
I'm just checking quick my calendar. Yeah, 6:15 works for me.
Okay with me also.
Yeah.
Beth?
It looks like it actually works for me.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Let's let's do that because that means that it's out of the way. We started meeting at 7. And we could definitely have enough time to have a serious discussion about short term rentals. So I'd be in favor of that process.
Just one question. We were going to have a potentially an in person meeting?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't suggesting that that would be your very next meeting. So I don't think you have to worry about that complication being added. Yeah, and keep in mind that you'll be you'll be meeting an open session to go into to vote to go into executive session. And then essentially coming back into open session for your 7 PM or the continuation of your, you know, And then essentially coming back into open session for your seven PM or the continuation of your, you know, meeting. At seven PM for the hearing that had been continued, so. So it, it sounds like there's no members here today or tonight that would not be able to do the six fifteen time.
Sounds good. So in that case, we will, we will postpone that discussion. I think what I would like to do is to circulate a. Basically, an outline of what I just said, a little bit more detailed outline of what I just laid out. And that this would not be for discussion among board members, but it would be just something to have to think about. As we, as you prepare for the discussion on the sixteenth. And it would, it basically be. Just kind of filling in the outline of what I gave as a, as a prelude. Just adding a little bit more detail to it. And, and that that would be. You know, basically a, a guide to help us move through in an, in an organized way to get to. Decide, decisions on key points. And unless anybody has any concern about that, that's what I would propose to do. Okay. Well then, okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of minutes for the February sixteenth meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review them? I made some comments on them. I don't think that they were particularly. Substantive. I think they were really trying to clarify some points. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about the minutes? So there are five of us who can vote on the minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, I will go through the, the roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth is abstaining.
Stain, yep.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Stain.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. Okay, thank you. Are there any other updates, Andy, for us?
No, I won't take any of your time at ten o'clock at night. Yeah, as you know, the short term rent units is being discussed. We will have a zoning amendment hearing on the business park amendment that was recently submitted to the council. Just as a recap, just a heads up for that, that's to allow community center, in this case, presumably the references you services. Closer to the low street side of the business park and then seafood processing and boat storage. But those are essentially the, the items in that amendment.
Okay.
So we'll have to schedule, we'll have to confirm the date for that, probably follow up with Rick and Bonnie tomorrow on that.
Great. Thank you. And nothing else?
I don't at this time. Thank you. I, I'm sorry, I, I should probably mention, just to fairness, I should probably mention that. We've had some discussions about the MBTA or so D H C D guidelines. For MBTA communities in the forty and how that might impact our forty hour district or what we need to do for zoning in that area. I wouldn't worry about that too much right now because there's going to be plenty of discussion about that in the coming months. But just to let you know, there's an expectation from the state that we essentially enlarge that district or expand the type of. Number of housing units that are available under zoning in that area. And so we have to examine our options and part of that is pending further guidance from the state, so. I know Rick and I have met on this with Alden and there'll be other city officials obviously having some in-depth discussions about this. So we can circle back and have a more productive discussion about what our, what our proposed path will be to address that going forward. It's not really possible to make those decisions right now, but we will be having a public meeting towards the beginning of April. To present what the state has basically told us that they expect us to do, what the ramifications are, one way or the other. And, you know, if we do, if we do it or we don't. And then we can then decide in the coming months after that, after the issue of guidance. As to what we want to do with it. But just kind of a heads up that there's sort of an expectation that local communities adopt greater density of residential units. Around transit stations even more than perhaps, perhaps we've done with our forty hour district. So just something to ponder and we'll certainly give you a, an in-depth overview of that.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? No?
This is Alden. I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second this, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, roll call, Alden.
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Night.